Good evening, it's now 6:00 PM. This is December 17th and this is a special meeting of the Garland Independent School District Board of Trustees. A quorum is present and notice of this meeting was posted as required by law. This past Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, several of us attended the AVID National Conference at the Gaylord Hotel in Grapevine. The AVID philosophy includes the Socratic method, a method taught initially in law schools, now working its way through colleges and into high school and into the middle schools. In honor of the Socratic method, a quote from the Greek philosopher Socrates. "Education is the kindling of a flame, not the filling of a vessel." Please join me for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We'll go to item three, information items, a recognized holiday greeting card contest winners, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Glick, trustees, Dr. Morrison. Each year, GISD holds its holiday greeting card contest, which is open to each fifth grade student in the district. Contest begins at the campus level. Each school's winner selected and then goes on to compete district-wide. This year, thirty-five campuses participated and three of the most talented fifth graders in the district had their designs selected as the best. There were more schools this year that participated than usual, so we were very excited about that. Joseph Nunez of Walnut Glen Academy, you can see in the middle there, actually let me click on the story, we'll open it up and see a bigger picture of Joseph's card. The season's greeting card there featured a seal and a penguin, of course, sledding down the hill, an evergreen tree in the background, and the snowman. I think Joseph set him off to the back, so no fear, I don't believe the seal and the penguin are gonna take him out there as they go down the hill. Rayland Rout of Roach Elementary. Rayland created a snow globe. It has a snowman, some falling flakes, a tree in the back, and there's candy canes at the bottom for a snack as well. And Elma Shake of Watson Technology Center. She had a card designed with a cross-section with the words Merry Christmas there, the Christmas tree in the background, nice cursive script. The designs of all three students were featured this year on the district's holiday stationery. The print shop cut the runs into thirds, and we've done that for the last two or three years, which enables all three students to have their designs featured in a card. And the two other designs are on the back of each of those winning designs. All of the thirty-five submitted designs have been incorporated into the rotation on GRSTV. That is the video here on the bottom, it's on our website as well as our television station. They were also posted in the Garland Council PTA's newsletter, and they are also on the slider there on the homepage of the website, as you just saw. If you would, please join me in welcoming the 2013 Holiday Greeting Contest winners and their families and principals, Joseph Nunez, Rayland Rout, and Elma Shake.
I would like to thank all the people who rooted me on to draw and all the people who really wanted me to win.
We'd like to ask the principals and the families and the children to stand up one more time, please. We'll go to item 3B, recognized winners of Garland Christmas Association Canned Food Drive, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Glick. For more than twenty-five years, GISD's participated in the Garland Christmas Association's annual canned food drive, and as has become a normal expectation, the numbers truly represent the giving spirit of this district. GISD collected one hundred thousand, one hundred four items for the Garland Christmas Association, which marks the eighth time in nine years that the students and the teachers have eclipsed the one hundred thousand item mark. Overall, the district's provided two million, four hundred twenty-six thousand and six hundred eighty-three items, yes, we counted them all, for the Christmas Association. In order to promote this level of participation, the district stages a friendly competition amongst the schools in an effort to see which group brings in the most items. It divides the schools into three levels, elementary, middle, and high school, resulting in one winner from each of the three groups. The campuses are then chosen based on the number of items contributed and their total student enrollment. This year's winners are Memorial Pathway Academy in the high school division, they turned in six point seven items per student. This is the second straight year Memorial won, which increased their total from last year, and that six point seven number is almost three times the amount of second place, North Garland High School. The Classical Center at Brandonburg contributed eight items per student, which was four times more than second place, and that's the highest total in four years within the middle school division. Hickman Elementary School, eleven point one items per student, and this is the third consecutive year that Hickman has won the elementary division. We also want to thank the GISD Maintenance Department, they handled the entire pickup schedule, so a big thank you to Bill Wiley and his crew, Jess Hudson, for letting them contribute and go assist in the endeavors of picking up the items and delivering them to the Salvation Army. And actually, there's more than a simple thanks that needs to be given to them this year, because in the midst of all of that bad weather, they were picking up the items and also de-icing sidewalks, parking lots, tree limbs, and they still managed to get these items picked up and delivered. They've really picked it up over the last three years, because of course, the Salvation or the National Guard no longer can assist us, because they relocated to Grand Prairie. Representatives from each of the winning campuses are here with us tonight, some have brought their student council and campus leaders that helped organize the events at the campus, so please join me in welcoming our winners from Memorial Pathway Academy, the Classical Center at Brandonburg, and Hickman Elementary School.
in donating canned food back to the community. It's become a friendly competition where we challenge each other, where the kids like, "Well, we want to make sure we do more than we did last year," and the spirit in which it is done is all in giving, so we just want to thank everyone for supporting us and very proud of our campus.
This is a big accomplishment for Memorial Pathway Academy. We have started a program called Empower, so that we get our students who aren't traditionally involved in school, involved in not only in the school but in the community. And I have to thank my staff, and we have representatives here today, because they are the ones that really encourage the students to participate and have little friendly classroom competitions amongst themselves to drive up the numbers, and I appreciate them and their efforts very much.
Well, I'd like to thank my student council sponsor, Sabrina Matovich, she couldn't be here this evening, but she did a tremendous job in spearheading this, and she's got a bit of a competitive streak herself. Her class actually won the competition this year. We did double-check to make sure it was all legitimate, and we had some opportunities for some kids to earn some privileges as well, and it really helped, and we quadrupled our last year's number, so it really worked, and so we really appreciate it.
Again, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, let me thank not only these three campuses, but all of the schools who participated. Sometimes, living in the richest nation in the world, the highest GDP per capita and numbers like that, we forget there are others who are less fortunate, and by teaching our children at a young age the idea of charity and sharing, we make this all a better world to live in. So again, thank you very much. Let's go to item 3C, receive the GISD assessment overview, Dr. Wells.
Good evening, Mr. Glick, Dr. Morrison, and Board of Trustees. Tonight, members of the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Division will present Garland ISD Academic Readiness Results Beyond Our Star Assessment, which is our state-required assessment. As you know, we are focused on the implementation of programs designed to prepare our students for college and career. You know, it's become more and more an increasingly global society, so we want to make sure that our students are prepared to compete globally. I want to say that it's been very encouraging to hear from our students, our parents, our stakeholders at our strategic plan community meetings. I've had the opportunity to attend all three of them, and the common theme that I've seen and heard is about the expectation that we're preparing the students to be able to compete at those levels. So I'm gonna go ahead and begin just by giving you a little bit of background as to why is this so important, why is this college and career readiness so important? According to the Georgetown Center on Education and Workforce, the report that was put out, there is about forty-seven million job openings between 2009 and 18 that will require a post-secondary education, and that's pretty much bachelor's degree or better. So that's why we're focusing on the programs that we have tonight, to share with you tonight, and also the goals that we're gonna share with you tonight. I have three area directors that will be presenting the bulk of the data, so it's my pleasure to introduce them and tell you a little bit about what they're gonna be talking about tonight. First, we have Linda Sires, area director for Area Seven, which includes Saxon High School. She'll provide an overview of the K through five assessments currently administered in GISD. They include the Iowa test, the La Gramos, which is a Spanish version of that assessment, as well as the COGAT. Next, we will have Dez Stewart, who is the area director for Area Six, which includes Rowlett High School. He will provide ACT Explorer data as well as PSAT assessment data. Last but not least, we have Maida Milligan, area director for Area Four, which includes Lakeview Centennial High School. She'll present advanced placement data as well as ACT and SAT. At this time, I'm going to invite Linda Sires to the podium, and she will continue the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Glick, board members, Dr. Morrison. The first test I will review for you is the Iowa test, which is formerly the ITBS, which is an achievement test used to determine a student's mastery of grade-level curriculum in reading and math. The national results of the Iowa are reported in four categories, which you see identified as advanced, high average, average, and below average. For our reporting purposes tonight, we are going to focus on the advanced and the high average categories, or the blue and orange bars on each of these graphs. Our goal is to increase the percentage of students scoring in these two categories. The starred red line you see drawn across each graph indicates the national average for each category, which is twenty-five percent. When you see the GISD numbers exceeding that percentage, that means more of our students achieved at that level than the national average. That's our goal, because that would mean we are preparing our students to achieve at a higher level, the college and career readiness level. I want to focus for a moment on the third grade reading results. If you add the percentages of students scoring at or above the average range, you see that we have seventy-six percent of our students who are reading at or above grade level. I'm going to discuss the importance of this statistic when I review the research on reading with you in the summary. The next graph shows the La Gramos results for reading and math. The La Gramos is the Spanish version of the Iowa, which is taken only by students who participate in the bilingual program in grades K one and three. We will once again examine the advanced and above-average scores for GISD students in 2013. We can note that although the kindergarten reading percentage nearly reached the national average at twenty-four percent, all other grades had a higher percentage of advanced scores in reading and math. In five of the six categories, the percentage of GISD students scoring in the above-average range was also above the national average. As you see from this data, our students who remain in the bilingual program tend to perform at higher levels in Spanish than their peers around the nation. That's excellent news, because research by national experts, such as Steven Craschen, clearly reveals that students who have a higher degree of proficiency in their native language first are more likely to perform well academically when they transition into The final results I will review for you are for the COGAT test, or the cognitive abilities test. This is a test in English, which is given to our fifth graders across the district. There is no Spanish equivalent, so our bilingual students do take the COGAT test in order to obtain this information for middle school scheduling purposes. This is not an achievement test like the Iowa and La Gramos, it is a test that measures a student's reasoning abilities, as well as their ability to identify relationships and demonstrate flexible thinking. It is important to note that the COGAT test has been shown to be a predictor for SAT performance in high school. The three areas tested on the COGAT are the verbal, which assesses vocabulary and word relationships, the quantitative, which assesses problem-solving and abstract reasoning, and the non-verbal, which removes all reading and asks students to problem-solve through the use of shapes and puzzles. The non-verbal test is the most accurate assessment for English-language learners, since it removes the dependency on English to understand and answer the questions. It is not surprising, then, that we note that the GISD students scored better on the non-verbal test than they did on the verbal or quantitative tests. We can continue to improve the numbers of students scoring at the higher levels by giving them open-ended questions and more opportunities to problem-solve. On this slide, you see our current performance on the Iowa and La Gramos reading and math tests for 2013, as well as where we plan to be in five years. Our goal is for our students to achieve above the national average on each of these tests by 2018. Some of these are aggressive goals, but our students need and deserve our best efforts. Why is this elementary data important when we look at college and career readiness? This is where I want to come back to the Iowa third-grade reading results. Research has shown that most students who struggle to read on level in third grade will continue to struggle with reading through high school. The good news, however, is that when poor readers receive early intervention, which is before third grade, eighty to ninety percent of them can be helped to read on grade level. That's the reasoning behind our new Intervention and Enrichment Program, or ITIME, which is currently being phased into our elementary schools. We want to identify and remediate reading difficulties early, and the way to do that is to use research-based strategies on a daily basis in small groups. In addition to ITIME, there are several other actions we are taking to improve instruction at the elementary level. You will see these listed on the right-hand side of this slide. Some of these programs have been in place prior to this year, some implementation is new this year, and others are in the plans for next year. I want to highlight a few of these efforts for you. The first is AVID, or Advancement Via Individual Determination. The philosophy of this program is that if you hold underserved students accountable to high expectations, then provide them with academic and social support necessary, they will rise to those expectations. The program is currently in place in eleven elementary schools, with plans to phase in the program into all elementaries over the next few years, with full implementation into our middle and high schools by next year. I know several of our board members attended the National AVID Conference in Grapevine last week, so you are familiar with some of the strategies employed by the AVID program, including WICHER, which stands for Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading, as well as Cornell Note-Taking and Socratic Seminars. You'll also see that we have formed focus groups to help us evaluate the effectiveness of our curriculum. Only by having a rigorous curriculum can we hope to lift all our students up to achieve at higher levels. The last item on your list is something we are very excited about exploring as an option for assessing our students to determine if they are achieving on grade level, the MAP or Measures of Academic Progress. This is a computer adaptive achievement test in reading, math, and science that can be administered up to four times a year. This can not only provide the universal screening we currently perform three times a year, it can also replace our locally-written benchmark exams with nationally-normed tests that give us a gauge of a student's current performance, a growth projection, which is a target for future achievement, and a powerful tool in the form of informative reports to involve parents and help them support their child's progress. Relating this back to the research, MAP can help us identify early on if our students are reading on grade level and track their progress and improvement through the year at every grade. I will now turn the podium over to Mr. Dez Stewart to review the ACT Explorer and PSAT results.
Good afternoon, Mr. Glick, Dr. Morrison, Board of Trustees. My portion of tonight's presentation builds upon the assessments that my colleague, Mrs. Sire, just communicated. We are in the business of building lifelong learners and want to be sure that we're providing students ample opportunities to be successful. Through the highlighted trends, I will be able to point out the proactive measures we will be taking to provide an enriching educational experience for all of our students. The ACT Explorer, designed by ACT for students in grades eight and nine, the Explore Program prepares students for their high school coursework and post-high school choices. It is a nationally-normed college readiness assessment that measures how much of the grade-level curriculum students have attained relative to their peers nationally and predicts student performance in the college-level coursework. The graph represents the percentage of students that are scoring at or below, at or above, the college-ready benchmark. For example, you can see that the college-ready benchmark for eighth-grade students in science is a scale score of eighteen, and thirty-eight percent of GISD students perform at or above that level compared to the thirty-seven percent nationally. While performance in the other three subject test areas does not mirror the same trend as that of science, GISD has identified strategies to improve in these areas. The table on the right provides additional information about eighth-grade GISD student performance on the Explore assessment by subgroups. It's important to look at data by subgroups to ensure that all students are performing at high levels. Similar performance trends are present in the ninth grade. The percentage of GISD students scoring at or above the college-ready benchmark in science is thirty-three percent, while performance in the other three subject areas is lower than our national peers. Again, you would notice that demographic performance has been highlighted in the graph to provide understanding of current student subgroup performance in order to establish a baseline and set high expectations for all. Now transitioning to the PSAT. The PSAT is a nationally-normed college readiness assessment based on reasoning that provides firsthand practice for the SAT. The assessment does not require students to remember information learned in or out of school, but rather assesses skills learned over many years. The data displayed is for 2012. It's important to note that in 2012, we tested one thousand, three hundred and ninety-four students. That represents thirty-two percent of our GISD sophomore class of 2012. Therefore, it's not surprising that the results indicate that the average scale score earned by GISD students exceeded the national average in all three assessed areas. In 2013, this current school year, the district made the decision to test all students on the PSAT assessment. Thus, all tenth graders, students, assessed with a PSAT in the fall of 2013, we are now anticipating the arrival of the results any day now, and that information will be coming Onto the PSAT, grade eleven. At the eleven-grade level, the PSAT is used as the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, a scholarship-based program co-sponsored by the College Board and the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. As with the previous slide, the results represented are from 2012 to 2013. This data is reflective of forty percent of the junior class. In 2013, we tested all eleven-grade students on the PSAT. While the results have not arrived, yet we are excited about the opportunity of increasing scholarship recipients by increasing access to the assessment program. Okay, over the past three years, GISD has had several students acknowledged under the various awards offered by the National Merit Scholarship Program. Students who performed well on the PSAT but may not qualify as a National Merit Scholarship winner are provided other opportunities to win scholarships from a variety of corporations and colleges, and as you can see in the chart, it's a listing of those students that have achieved the different rankings, but we've yet to get the National Merit Scholar, which is what we're planning on increasing here with the plans coming up. Which leads me to the five-year goals. In the gray column, you see our current data, and from 2014 to 2018-19, we have our five-year projected goals. In this slide, you see our current data as well as the five-year plan. It is our goal to increase our students' level of achievement on both the ACT Explorer and PSAT, while also increasing the number of students who receive National Merit recognition within each of the distinguished groups. Please note that the target scores for the PSAT change yearly and are different from state to state. These target scores are developed according to the students' collective performances on the assessments each year. Listed on this slide are the programs that are currently operating or being phased into our schools to further enhance a college and career-ready academic environment. While looking at our student subgroup data and realizing the importance of all students performing at or above national averages, it is with great excitement that we're expanding the AVID program to all of our secondary schools. The advancement via individual determination prepares target students- The Advancement Via Individual Determination prepares target students in the academic middle who have the desire to go to college and the willingness to work hard. AVID places academically-average students in advanced courses and provides them with elective classes that prepare them to be successful in rigorous curriculum, enter mainstream activities in the school, and increases their opportunities to enroll in four-year colleges. In addition to these benefits, students are taken on college visits where they tour campuses, learn about college entrance requirements and the importance of having good grades in high school, get information about the different degrees offered, and most importantly, get excited about college. AVID's mission is to close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college readiness and success in a global society. The AVID program levels the playing field for minority, rural, low-income, and other students without a college-going tradition in their families. In conclusion, it is our goal to increase the overall college and career readiness within our schools by increasing parent-student awareness and tracking student progress, implementation of more rigorous programming, for example, Springboard, and more exposure to college preparation exams and initiatives. At this time, I would like to welcome Dr. Maida Milligan to the podium.
Way down here. Good evening, Mr. Glick, Board of Trustees, Dr. Morrison. This last section of our assessment overview focuses on Advanced Placement, ACT, and SAT, those assessments that our high school students take in preparation for college and college Our first slide is about Advanced Placement. Advanced Placement, which is a college board program, is one of the ways that our GISD students have access to college-level courses while they're still in high school. Students have the opportunity to take and to pay for an AP exam in the spring for those AP courses that they have taken. Our district does not require our students to take that test, and we do not pay the fee for them, they have to pay the fee for themselves. Some districts do require that students take the test and also provide financial support for those testing fees. In the summer, after the tests are taken, students are notified by the College Board about their scores. The score range on AP tests is one to five, and scores of three, four, and five are generally considered qualifying scores, though whatever the colleges accept will vary from college to college. Most do accept a three, four, or five, and those students who are granted that course credit, they can save lots of money on tuition and in time while they're in college. If you look at the graph, you can see where GISD students who took the exam in 2013 scored as compared to the nation. When you add up the three, four, and five score percentages, those qualifying scores, you can see that forty-three percent of those exams taken resulted in a qualifying score for GISD kids. The next column tells you how we compared with the nation for 2012. This gives you a gauge for comparison to the nation. Unfortunately, the College Board takes up to a year to report scores, so we don't have the 2013 scores to compare to our students, but this gives you some idea. We should have those scores in February. The table on the right provides you with information about what percentage of our students score a three or higher on one or more AP exams by the graduating class and for each grade level. So for example, for the graduating class of 2013, you can see that fifteen-point-four percent scored, made a score of three or better on one or more of all of the AP exams that they took while they were in high school, as compared to nineteen-point-five percent for the nation. Our goal is to improve that percentage at each grade level and overall for our graduating students, and I'm going to share some strategies with you in the summary for this section of how we're going to do that. The next slide is ACT. ACT is a nationally-normed college entrance exam, and this test is based on general education development and curriculum knowledge in four areas: English, math, reading, and science. GISD had twenty-three percent of our graduating students take the ACT in 2013. The graph on the left shows what percentage of those test takers scored at the college-ready benchmark by subject. Under each of those subject headings, you can see the college-ready benchmark score is there in parentheses. So for example, for English, you can see that sixty percent of our GISD students met that college-ready benchmark score of eighteen for that subtest. For English, math, and reading, you can see that GISD students are within the national level by three to four percent, with science at the national level. And the table on the right provides information about each ethnicity and how these groups performed as compared to the nation. Unlike the AP scores from the previous slide, we do have 2013 national scores on ACT to compare our performance. When you look at the data and analyze it by ethnicity group for performance, our GISD students outperformed the national percentage for college readiness as measured by the ACT with the exception of the Asian group in science and English. The next slide is about SAT. Like ACT, SAT is also a nationally-normed college entrance exam. However, SAT is based on reasoning ability, and it assesses student readiness for college-level coursework by testing student ability to analyze and solve problems, much like the COGAT that Linda mentioned for elementary. The students are tested in three areas: critical reading, what we used to call the verbal section, math, and writing. GISD had forty-four percent of our graduating students take the SAT in 2013. Now, the combined score range for SAT is six hundred to twenty-four hundred. For each subtest, it's two hundred to eight hundred, so the college-ready benchmark score for each subtest is five hundred. In the graph on the left of the slide, you can see the average score for each test for those students who took it in 2013 and how they compared to students who took it across the nation again in 2013. We do have scores for that for SAT. The table on the right provides a conversion of those average scores into a percentile rank. That way, we can see how all of our students did, and again, each ethnicity as compared to the nation for that testing year. Again, our goal is to improve in each of these areas for all of our students. Now, this next slide gives you a little bit of a different perspective. How does all of this information translate when a student applies to college? These ten schools that are listed on this slide are the top ten schools that GISD students most frequently request that their ACT and SAT score reports be sent to for admission application. So based on that, we make the assumption that these are the schools that our kids most want to attend. The columns provide score requirements for these schools for SAT and ACT where that information is available. For a student in the top ten percent, though, these SAT and ACT test requirements are often much lower. So for example, if I wanted to go to Stephen F. Austin, and I ranked in the top ten percent of my graduating class, I wish, there would be no minimum ACT or SAT score requirement. A student who wanted to go to Stephen F. Austin that was in the top twenty-five percent would only need an eight fifty on the SAT and a seventeen on the ACT. So the scores that you're looking at are for those kids who are in the top fifty percent of the class, that top half of their graduating class. Again, our goal is to get all of our kids there so that they can attend the colleges that they wish to attend. Prior to setting goals, we examined what our course enrollment was, and this slide lists what percentages of students are enrolled in advanced courses at each of our high school campuses for this school year, for the 2013-2014 school year. That information is important because we need to know where we want to go. So in terms of enrollment, on the next slide, you can see that we've set goals for advanced course enrollment for the next five years. In order to reach the college and career readiness standard that we've been talking about and to surpass national performance levels, more of our students need to be enrolled in advanced level courses during high school. Increasing that enrollment is the first step toward our goals, and this is where we're The next thing we looked at was where we want students to be in terms of assessment. So we've also set five-year goals for AP, ACT, and SAT student assessments. So our goal is not only to increase enrollment, as you saw in the previous slide, but we also have to increase the percentage of students achieving and exceeding that college-ready standard within the next five years. Why is this so important? Why is it so important to increase enrollment and student performance on these tests? Dr. Wells referenced part of it in her introduction, but the research also supports that belief. So if you look at the next slide, the research, as detailed with sources at the bottom of the slide, shows that AP enrollment in those courses and success on AP tests will increase the likelihood that students will stay in college, get a higher grade point average while they're there, and earn a degree, the ultimate reason we want our kids to go to school. District and school performance on the AP honor roll in Canada and in the United States, of which there are fourteen of those schools right here in Texas, demonstrates that schools can increase the number of students enrolled in AP and can also improve the number of qualifying scores of three or higher, and we can accomplish this here, too. The rigor and the quality of curriculum impacts how our students perform on college entrance exams, and thus the colleges and universities that our students want to go to. So these are the things, as Linda and Dez have referenced. Some of these initiatives are already in place, some of these initiatives we are working on this year, and some are still in the planning stages. You've heard a lot about AVID and WICHER, and you already know that these are strategies for building that college-going culture, that college and career readiness foundation that's in place in twenty-one of our schools, and we're looking at expanding it to more of them. We're in the second year of implementation for Springboard, the College Board College and Career Readiness Program, that's in grades six through twelve. It's at all our middle schools and in two of our high schools. Next, we're also looking at, to address our goals, we want to explore a partnership with NIMZI, the National Math and Science Initiative. The NIMZI grant provides what they call Elements of Success: teacher training for pre-AP and AP, incentives, awards for performance, financial support for student testing, teacher mentors, student tutorial sessions, including mock exam sessions. These are all things that will help our kids get them where we know they need to be. We've also begun a study of the Fundamental Five to implement next year with added professional development to improve the quality of instruction at all of our campuses. Also, for planning purposes next year, after strategic planning and as a part of strengthening our campus improvement planning and our campus needs assessment, we're going to use the College Readiness Assessment. That's a review of our AP course offerings and an analysis of the strategies that are used in those courses in order to strengthen the AP program at each campus. You've also heard Linda and Dez talk about the Measure of Academic Progress. We do need to see where our students are compared to the nation throughout the academic year and as they progress through elementary, middle, and high school. This kind of information empowers our students to set goals, it empowers our teachers to provide relevant and rigorous instruction, and empowers our parents with regular reports of student growth and ability. And the importance of that student progress monitoring early and often, along with the comprehensive framework of best practices and instruction, will help us reach our goals of college and career readiness for all of our students. At this time, I'll turn the microphone over to Dr. Wells.
Trustees, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? Ms. Ax, you want to start?
Thank you for the report. Am I coming out? Yeah. Thank you for the report. I had a couple of, in fact, I've got several here. Is it realistic to set a goal for increasing the PSAT scores when you're going from thirty percent taking the test to a hundred percent taking the test?
That's a good point, and because we are increasing the number of students taking it, the scores will likely see a decrease. We just wanted to show that, you know, our expectation is that we continue to provide supports for those students as we introduce more of them to this assessment. So you're correct.
Okay. On the MAP program, is this, is this something new? Because I don't remember ever hearing of it before.
This is something new, which is why we're sharing it tonight, and it's something we're exploring. You know, in my conversations with Mr. Glick, we talked a lot about nationally-normed assessments instead of just looking at state comparisons, we're looking at nationally-normed assessments, and MAP is an assessment that does that and also provides a growth measure. So as a student or as a parent, you can see where your student is currently, and they project where they should be at the end of the year, and that test is, you can give it about four times a year, including the summer. So it helps us to look at that, are you on track, are you not on track?
And did I understand that this is replacing the Benchmark Program?
If this is something that we decide to use, it would replace the Benchmark Program. MAP is currently used in thirty-five districts throughout our state, very, very long reputation of very good quality. When we looked at the research, they're very high quality for identifying the things that kids need for intervention and as well as being on track for college and career.
Is there some kind of different or additional preparation that goes into preparing the kids for this test as compared to the Benchmark Test?
With MAP, it is aligned to the STAR requirements and the TEES. It's definitely designed for Texas, which is why those districts are using it. So you actually get a report that shows you which TEES and things like that you need to focus on when you get the results, so it's very aligned.
When I was reading the material about it, they seem to be mentioning Common Core a great deal. It is well-aligned to our curriculum as well?
Yes. It does mention Common Core, just because they are used throughout the country. However, they are customized for Texas school districts.
Just one other question. Found this out from my granddaughter, I think. The SAT, excuse me, the ACT test measures writing without doing a writing sample, is that correct?
I'm not familiar with that component. The English. Okay.
The English part of the framework question, then it's construction.
I haven't heard that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Ax, leave it.
Hello, Dr. Wells, thanks to the area directors for your program. I think I just have a couple of fill-in-the-blanks questions. Is the COGAT administered to all fifth graders now?
It is used for GT identification for the magnet program.
Okay, so the information we saw was not population, it was a specific subset?
No, it's all of them.
Oh, it is all of them now?
It's all of them.
Okay. Is that changed within the past couple of years?
No, hopefully, the only students who may not take the COGAT would be those who are not English proficient enough for this to be a realistic measure of their abilities, but it is administered to all fifth graders.
Great. Okay, great. So that's, and then actually, my, the second question had to do with English proficiency and was spurred by a question trustee Ax asked. Is our goal really one hundred percent testing? And by that, I mean, so students who arrive in Garland ISD from Zimbabwe and their junior, well, let's say, a non-English-speaking student who arrives in their junior year, are we expecting that person to take the SAT or the PSAT as a sophomore? The new arrivals, the ELL, students that do alternative testing for end-of-course? Or do we, what do we mean by a hundred percent? Because a hundred percent is, I think, probably no, but I'd like to hear.
Well, since they're going to have to take the STAR test that year, they might as well get right in it because there's no time lapse. Used to in Texas, students who came from another country who spoke a different language in English had a year to get ready for the test. That's no longer the case. So you might as well get in there and do it. Now, one hundred percent, obviously, we have some students with disabilities that would be exempt from this test, so one hundred percent of students that would be on track for the regular graduation plan that Garland ISD offers, yes, we would, we would test them.
Okay. And what has, what was our success in terms of percentage that actually showed up to take the test?
Attendance was very good on that day. When we get the results, we'll be able to see just how they perform, but in my past experiences, you know, exposure to that assessment in tenth grade really prepares you to compete at the eleventh grade, so I think it's good that they're being exposed to the tenth-grade PSAT because eleventh grade is when they qualify for that National Merit, so.
Right. But I guess my question is, we're, our goal is, we paid for a hundred percent of the students to take it, did a hundred percent of the students show up to take the assessment on that day?
We can get you that data about the attendance for that day.
If they were here, they took it.
Yeah, it was pretty good attendance.
If they were absent, they did not.
So it was administered during the school day?
Yes.
Yes.
During the school day. Well, one thing in reference to what Mr. Ax mentioned, when you're talking about, you are correct, the more number, the number of students as it increases, traditionally, the score goes down. the score goes down. So what you, what you really have to do is you have to look at it, instead of a percentage increase, you look at other indicators like, if you're taking, if you're talking about the PSAT, the overall percentage may go down, but your number of national merits may go up because you're testing more students. So there's a trade-off. There's also a trade-off, if you encourage more students to take the, the AP test, you're going to have more ones and twos. But what College Board will tell you, students who take an AP class and take the test, if they just have one class, 29%, you know, it goes from 29 to 43%. 29% of students in college that never take an AP class are successful in graduation. If you take one class and one test, whether you pass it or not, it goes to 43%. If you take two classes and two tests, whether you pass the test or not, it goes to 62%. So what you want to do is encourage students to take it. So you are correct, you, you know, statistics you have to watch a little bit. But I will take increase in numbers and lower percentages because what'll end up happening is the percentage will drop overall, but your total number of students. Example, if that 13% of students making a five equates to, I'm just throwing out a number here, 125 students, and the next year we have 11% of the students make a five, but I have 155 students, that's, that's a win.
I had one final question. Would you mind going to the slide that showed the percentage target goals for increased in rigor in curriculum or the IB, AP dual credit? It might have been, yeah, that one. It's hard to know what, what these mean, because I, I would expect that some of these would be duplicated headcounts if you actually looked at goals for particular students. So if you, I know you don't have an exact figure, but your ballpark, what's your best guess as to what percentage of all of our students would this be that we would anticipate taking some kind of advanced coursework if you're looking at non-duplicated headcount?
I looked at, I can give you an example, looking at Garland High School, they have about 24, 2500 students, and the total number of students with all the courses is 500. So at, just at that school, it's about, you know, less than 20% of them that are enrolled in multiple courses, yes. So that's the numbers that we have. We can definitely break it out to see, but most of the kids that are going to be enrolled in these courses will be enrolled in multiple, so they're, they're counted several times. You're right.
So you would go with the, maybe like the highest and then add some percentage above that?
Yes.
So, okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Griffin?
Yes, a very excellent report, a very aggressive report, which lends me to ask the question about how will we, or what procedures will you have in place for monitoring these targets across all of the areas that was mentioned?
I think one of the things that we talked about, which, when we introduced the MAP, it will give us the data that we're looking for to make sure that we're on target. Another district that's close to us uses that data to project students that will be potential merit scholars. They start tracking them all the way from elementary school, so we can help guide them into those pre-AP courses. One of the things we talked about this weekend at the Avid was about the Algebra I readiness and which kids are taking Algebra I and how it's a gatekeeper. Well, this is another assessment that can help us to see, okay, this kid is really ready for that algebra course. It just gives you those predictions, so we can help guide the parents, the students through the counseling to help them into the right courses, and we can monitor how we're doing that with our students if we have that type of data.
And this is for all students?
This is for all students, yes.
On many of the actions in your summaries of the three reports, mentions Avid, and I'm a fan of Avid, have been for years. But Avid has restricted qualifications or qualifications for kids to participate. And when I look at these five-year goals and objectives, we have students who are from families of college graduates or who have attended college, and pretty much that knocks them out of the ability to participate in the Avid program. So am I to assume, when I look at Avid being the driver in each of these summary areas, is that we are going to take things from Avid and incorporate it across the district? Because my, my concern, if that is not the case, and even if it is the case, then how you state your action items may need to state those portions of Avid that we are going to implement district-wide and school-wide, because some of our parents who are college graduates have...
She's, she's streaming you live over here, Linda, so sorry about that.
Sorry, Linda, I can't get enough of you.
Yes, you can. Yes, you can.
That's a first.
Okay, okay.
You wanted to know if it was working, it is.
I didn't ask that question, okay? Now you, okay, I'm glad I wrote my notes down so I can stay on target, okay? But you see what I'm saying? Because that word Avid, as, as, as positive as it is to our parents that are college graduates, it's a turnoff. So I just caution us as, when we talk about Avid, that we be specific in the strategies from Avid that we're going to use so that it is a clear understanding that it is for all students.
I think Dr. Morrison wants to answer that.
I would love to answer that question. Okay, so you are absolutely correct in the design of Avid years ago. Now, my particular philosophy in Avid is very simple. Any student that wants to get in Avid regardless of where they are in their family situation or whatever, if they apply and they want to be in it, they can be in it. We do not have restrictions anymore, I can tell you that. So just so you know, and that, we, meaning Garland ISD.
Okay.
And we will, and we will communicate that to counselors at, at a meeting when we, when we go into the enrollment process. Now, what I, what I would say, just, just like the Avid strategies are great strategies, those of you that attended the conference this weekend, the strategies are wonderful. All teachers would benefit from Avid training. Also, just so you know, we, we need to get on, we need to get to where every one of our core teachers at some point goes to pre-AP or AP training if they're in those lines of classes. So I may not be the pre-AP teacher right now. However, if I go to the training, those strategies can be used in a regular classroom or the pre-AP classroom. The best training is the best training. Avid training and, and College Board training or the, or the pre-AP training and AP training is the best training that teachers will ever receive. So I will tell you, what I was used to is every three years, if you're an AP teacher or pre-AP teacher, you went to training. Every five years, if you were the, if you were a core teacher that did not actually at this particular time teach a pre-AP or AP. So if you embrace the environment that all students are college-ready, you have to allow the opportunity for all students to be entered into any of the programs. So exclusive programs has to go away, that every level, meaning some schools, not necessarily talking about Garland, but I have, in the past have been in school districts where particular schools are exclusive. In other words, I only want the top-level students in this AP class because, you know, the, you know, if, if I just let anybody into AP chemistry and you have some students in there that are going to struggle, then that's going to bring everybody else down. That's ridiculous. You know, when, when you look at college, not all of us made straight A's in college. There may have been some of you out there that did, but I sure did not. And so I'm, I'm glad I was not excluded in college, but just because I did not make straight A's. And so we have to, we, it's, it's changing a mindset. So all students in Avid, all students in pre-AP and AP, all teachers trained in those strategies.
I think that's, that's good news. Also, it's, it's a little, I don't know what the right word is, because of the size of our district, to implement something of, of...
Three to five years, you put, you do 20%, you do 20% of your teachers every year. And the AP training's in the summer.
Okay, and, okay, and so, all right, so you have, you have a plan. And again, I'll end with, as we change, communication is key to not only our students, but our parents, so that they clearly understand the direction that we're proceeding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lura?
Got a question on the PSAT, let's say, for last year. I'm assuming if you're looking at your score, you have to add the three columns together so like that's 135. What does it take to be a national, I mean, we have zero. What does it take to be, what score do you have to have on the PSAT to qualify?
I can tell you for national merit, it changes each year, but I can give you an idea, about a 215, 216 is the index for Texas. And so if on that assessment you're above 215, 216, you're pretty much, you've made it. And so each year, they publish a booklet that gives you the different indexes for different states. Massachusetts is always high, it's like 222, you know, that, some other states are pretty, are a little bit lower than Texas. So we look at that every year, and then once you get your score reports, like we will get in a couple of weeks, hopefully, we can look and see which kids already are there or which ones are close in the 10th grade that we can work with.
In, in addition, a lot of, a lot of parents don't realize, it's not just about getting the 215 on the PSAT. You have to go back and take the qualifying SAT test the next year and score a certain amount. You also have to have a certain grade point average, and you have to take the time to fill out the paperwork. You do any one of, you, you fail in any one of those three things and you won't get it. I've had students in the past that had scored 230 on the PSAT and was not a national merit finalist. They were a semifinalist, but not a finalist because their grade point average was below what, what a qualifying grade point average could be. So that's why it's important as parents, so they know that, grade point average does mean something. It's not just about taking one test and scoring that one test. That one test will get you into college, but it won't necessarily get you a college paid for, which it would have if your GPA would have been higher.
Any other questions? Dr. Wells, let me thank you. You and I have had, I don't know how many different conversations leading up to this presentation. I sometimes think, as trustees, we get involved in the minutia of a district, but the most important thing we do is what this presentation is about, and it has to be. And what we discussed is setting goals and how those goals would be reached. What strategies would you employ to get to those goals? And I'd like to thank yourself and the area directors for putting this presentation together. This is very, very exciting, because now we have a path, now we have some numbers. We have real numbers. For the first time in my seven years, we have numbers that we can look at and say, this is where we're going, and this is how we're going to get there, with proven strategies that have worked all over the country. The first three sessions I attended at the Avid presentation, each one of them talked about the MAP program. I had heard the name, I didn't know what it was. I know now it works, and I can't wait for you to introduce that here. And they gave stories about the kids learning their, their scores, and you and I talked about this on Saturday. And how you know what it is, you know where you have to get to.
That's right.
And you're proud when you achieve it. So again, thank you for the presentation, I think it was wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Glick.
We'll go to item 3D, review facility assessment provided by Huckabee and Associates. Mr. Huckabee. Oh, Jess, are you going to start with?
Can I introduce?
Mr. Hudson, thank you very much.
Mr. Glick and trustees, Dr. Morrison, we have tonight Huckabee and Associates that will be doing a presentation on the facility assessment that they've just recently completed. So I believe Chris is going to start it off, and so, Chris?
Good evening, President Glick, board members, and Dr. Morrison. Set that down before I drop it. Huckabee team is very excited to be here tonight to present to you the results of about eight months of work by 30 people who've been in your district literally day in and day out, not, not including back office support. A great group of consultants who've worked with us to bring tonight to you a very detailed assessment. In a moment, I'm going to turn this over to the principal in charge, Craig Drone, who's going to introduce you to the team in detail and really get into the details of the project. But I kind of wanted to set the tone tonight for the assessment, and you saw me carry this up. The assessment is quite large. This is only one volume. There's four. So you can tell there's a lot of data in here. If you would like, we'll be happy to give you printed copies. We really only brought one, but we're going to do you each a favor. And we're going to give it to you on a disc, either a thumb drive or a disc, which we brought tonight, so you can take it with you. Our hope is that during the holidays, somebody, you can either not sleep or somebody's annoying you, you need some time alone, and you can take the disc and spend some time with it because it really is going to take you some time. And so if one of those two things happen, then you guys really get to settle in. If you're, if you're suffering from insomnia, you are in luck over the holidays, okay? It's going to be great for you. I wanted to say a few things about the, what you're going to get tonight. We have a very set procedure in our firm. When we issue this to you, we go through a one-month comment period, and that's what, when we give this to you tonight, where we are, meaning the, the document from end to end, we'll go through a very detailed QA process for the next 30 days. It will give you a chance to comment on anything. If you have a question, we need to make a clarification. Anything you, you see, the staff here sees, will be incorporated into what will be a final document that's issued in 30 days. But normally, the changes are minimal, but there can be some. So just keep that in mind when you're going through it. Also, the one thing we're not going to do tonight, unless you'd like to, is we're not going to grab two or three schools and go through them in detail. Craig did that the last time we were here, he picked a project and we walked through it. That's exactly what you're going to see, you're just going to see 90 of them, lots and lots and lots of detail. What we're going to do is more of a high-level summary, try to give you an idea of where you are in a big picture form. There's a lot of detail, it's going to take time to go through that. But let me explain something that I do think's very important. Tonight, we're at the beginning, not the end, and I hope that's important for you guys to realize. You're at the beginning of the decision-making process, but you're going to have great data, and that's what our goal is in the assessment. You will make decisions, but as you're making decisions, you'll be making decisions based on very, very good data that will be at your fingertips. And we're going to walk you through what the next steps will be, but I don't want you to think tonight, we're going to give this to you and go, hey, here you go, congratulations. That wouldn't be fair. There's a lot of information to go through, and we're going to walk you through that and where things will go from here. I want to turn things over now to Craig Drone. He's going to kind of introduce and start the process, and then Doug Benson will follow. And we're going to go through quite a bit of detail with you tonight and make sure we can answer your questions and get you off on the right foot as far as looking at this and kind of what the next steps will be in the process. Craig?
Thank you. Let me get to our presentation here. So I just want to start off by kind of making some introductions. You, you know my, you know me, you know Chris. Doug is our educational planner, who you'll be, he'll be doing part of the presentation tonight. Heather Barksdale and Terry Salinas are here tonight. They pretty much led the in-the-field part of the, part of the process, and in that, they worked with some other folks. I'll introduce Sean Khalid, Domingo Sanchez, Matthew Tilbrook. They're not here tonight, I don't believe, I didn't see them walk in. But we do have Dave Srobel and Darren Martinez, who joined us tonight, who are part of our team. We also had Roberto, who's part of our team. He's not here tonight, I think you all may have met Roberto before, he's hard to forget. Al Lawrence, who's our technology director, is here tonight. Ben Harris, our structural lead, he's not here tonight, but John Papa is here, and he was part of the process as well. And then we had a lot of consultances, as, as Chris talked about. And so our mechanical-electrical consultant was Gary Bristow, and Clint Johnson had a big part of that, so Gary is here tonight, I believe. John Pace is our, is our kitchen consultant with JMK, and John is here tonight. And Chris Clark with Amtech Roofing, Drew Dethridge with Moy Consultants. Ronnie was here, but he had to leave, he had a seven o'clock, something at seven he had to get to, and then Rob Morrison in Ronnie's office as well. So tonight, we're just going to go over a number of things. We're going to just kind of review our schedule to get to this point. We're going to talk of, just an overview of the process. One of the things we want to talk about is the prototypes of, as have we looked at your buildings as kind of a starting point in our analysis, and to think about the buildings is through the prototype process. We'll look at some cost models, we'll talk about some general findings, we'll talk next steps, and then we'll take any kind of questions that you may have. So in April 2013, the district hired Huckabee, and then in May 10, we met with your facilities group. In the sixth, we met a kickoff meeting with the curriculum folks, and I'm sorry, that slide got all filed up there. We've had a meeting with your curriculum folks... We've had a meeting with your curriculum folks to begin the process of identifying kinda where you are curriculum-wise and what schools that you have now best suit that and kinda what a program, what a model program begins to look like to, to support the curriculum. We started our in-the-field work on June tenth after the students were out of the building. And then we met again with the curriculum staff in, in June to kinda follow up with them and, and pin down that program a little more. Between July fifteenth to September fifth, we met with the campus-level administrators at all the campuses and all the facilities to try to understand from their viewpoint what were some of the issues they were aware of in their buildings. And then between August thirteenth and November twenty-fifth, we met with representatives, in some cases multiple times, across the district. Administrative operations, athletics, career and technology, community relations, curriculum instruction, your demographer, fine arts, health science, health services, risk management, you can see the list there. We tried to get an extensive list and really touch all parts of your district and all players in the process here. We came, we presented a couple of updates to you on August thirteenth and August and October eighth. And then we're here tonight to present our final draft. So an overview of the process. Really, the, the assessment does several things. It assists GISD in the following ways. It documents deficiencies and needs in the district's facilities when contrasted against established standards. It serves as a tool for decision-making about the future of the district as it relates to facilities and how those facilities support your mission. It allows for determination of the levels to which facilities are consistent and provides a reasonable, and provide a reasonable level of equity across the facilities for all learners. And then it provides a baseline for pricing that Doug will get into as we look at, at going forward with any kind of bond planning. As Chris said, we had more than thirty individuals and those thirty individuals gathered documents about the, about your facilities. We walked this seventy-five, or seven, seven and a half million square feet of, of indoor space. We walked eleven hundred acres of property. We looked at document, we reviewed and documented with your staff known needs. We downloaded institutional knowledge. We discussed facility needs to fulfill the curriculum needs now and in the future. And met with leadership to understand what the future of GISD is, what it's envisioned to be and how the facilities need to serve that. What we ultimately wanna do is have facilities that provide a level of safe security for your, for your students and your staff and that, that assist in delivering the curriculum and doesn't get in the way of delivering the curriculum. Those are the goals really and we're looking for. So boots on the ground, we walked the, we walked all your facilities, the two pre-Ks, the forty-six elementaries, you can see the list there. We talked about our custom app and what was a little different in this, in this assessment and, and part of why it took so long. You have a lot of buildings to begin with. But also, we also tried to capture information that would be something that your GIS system would be able to have data points in there to kinda capture what you have on the ground now that you don't have that information. So it was kinda twofold. It was about looking at what some of the issues are, but also just generally capturing everything in the district so you have that information in your GIS system. And again, we talked about the idea of a living document so that if this continues and, and can serve your, your maintenance going forward. We talked about the different assessment components that we, that we reviewed in this. A lot of the folks, you can see there's, there's some of the consultants we spoke about tonight were involved in, in those different areas. And I'm not gonna read those all to you. So some of the facts of the district. Of the elementary schools, thirty-five in the city of Garland, eight are in the city of Rowlett and three are in the city of Saxon. Middle schools, nine are in the city of Garland, two in Rowlett and one in the city of Saxon. And high schools are five in the city of Garland, one in Rowlett and one in the city of Saxon. District facts are, as continuing, continuing with the district facts. Four of the other educational facilities are all in Garland. Your athletic facilities are all in Garland. And your administrative facilities, ten of those are in Garland, one is in Saxon. And we, we, in that, that really should say administration and other facilities. That's where your ag facility is, the one that we counted there in Saxon. Yeah. I don't know what, how much administration occurs there, but. So, you know, and we looked at a simple calculation. So we basically took the number of facilities you had, the age of those facilities. And we determined that your, your elementary schools are thirty-five years of age, including the pre-Ks. Your middle schools are thirty-nine years of age, high schools are thirty, are thirty-seven. And your other educational facilities are forty-eight years old. But I think it's also important to note what those ranges are. So that you have elementary schools as old as sixty-three years and as, as recent as a half a year. Your middle schools range from fifty-four years to sixteen years. And your high schools range from seventy-seven years to eleven years. Now, obviously, that's not the entire school isn't seventy-seven years old, but a portion of it is. The other thing we looked at that, that struck us as we did our assessment that the sites in Garland I S D are fairly small. And so what we've got here is just some, some ideas of what a, what kinda what standards are around sites. And our experience tells us that elementary schools ought to be ten to twelve acres. Middle schools ought to be twenty-four to thirty acres and high schools are sixty-five plus acres. Again, that just goes to fitting all the activities and the parking and the drives and all that that needs to go on those sites. The Council of Educational Facility Planners International, SEFP, you all may have heard that term before. They have the following recommendations of ten acres plus, plus one acre for every hundred students. Junior high schools, they have, they recommend twenty acres plus one for every hundred students. And then for senior high schools, they recommend thirty acres plus one acre for every hundred students. So you can see those become pretty sizable. They're similar, but in some cases larger than what we would normally recommend. But by any measure, your, your sites are undersized. Elementary schools range from, range from four and a half acres at Kimberlin to twenty-one point four acres at Dorsey. And in Dorsey, that twenty-one point four acres includes that hill. So that's not all usable space. The average is, is just under ten acres for your elementary school sites. In nineteen eighty-eight was about when the sites kinda got over that ten-acre range. So anything older than eighty-eight is, is probably gonna be a fairly small site. And the reason we, that's interesting or of interest to us is that if we talk about additions or some other kinda work at those campuses, that's gonna impede some, that's gonna limit us in what we might be able to do there. Middle schools ranges from eight point three six at Webb to a little bit over twenty-eight acres at Schrady with an average of twelve acres, a little bit over twelve acres. And your high schools range from sixteen point four eight at Garland to about sixty, almost sixty-three at Rowlett with an average of forty-two. So I just wanna go over some general information here. We thought that the, you know, the facility's been maintained to the greatest extent possible given their age and, you know, their, their general, generally their age and their systems. We would expect, as we would expect newer facilities have fewer problems than do the older facilities. All facilities are in pretty good need of a thorough cleaning. And what, we say that because we, as we dug around and poked around the facilities, there was just a lot of dust and dirt and debris and back in corners and up on top of ducts and all that kinda stuff that really can be, can be, potentially be a hazard as far as, you know, allerg- allergy-type responses and that kinda thing. In several of the original portions of your open, you'll, as we go through the prototypes, you'll see you have several formerly open classroom concept schools. And in those schools, there's a lot of poor sound transmission between the different classrooms. A lot of conditions where you have to go from one classroom into another by walking through a classroom. So it doesn't have an exit, an exit to the hallway. So also in this, Doug will talk a little bit about this. We identified some campuses in your district that are kinda your model campuses and we use that as a measurement for all the, for all the campuses. Where we challenged, where we were challenged with that was at the high school level. Because your high schools are all so different, there really wasn't a good model to kinda judge those by. So those were all kinda judged as standalone facilities based on what they offer. It was really difficult to find some commonality across, across that that made sense for everybody. Most of the older campuses not have ramps to the stage and have been addressed with lifts. There's been some cases where the, the lifts are, are maybe not compliant anymore. There's some situation, we had one principal tell us about how they had to carry wheelchair-bound students up on the step, up on the steps to get on the stage. One of the things that you're required to do is to have equal access for everybody. And so if you don't have ramps or working lifts, it's really a challenge for those students that are mobility-challenged to, to get up on stage and participate the same as everybody else. Sites, we talked about the sites being small. Generally, they, in a lot of cases, they don't have sufficient parking. Their, their drop-off setup or, or condition is, is difficult where we have buses and parents sharing the same drop-off lines or they're not long enough and they're bleeding out into the street and causing issues in your, in your neighborhood traffic flow. We talked about sites. Your older ones have just limited drives for onsite stacking and really does, impede the neighborhood flow. Parking is a challenge at almost all the campus, all the older campus sites and at all the middle schools. They all had challenges with parking. Twenty-five percent of the schools, of the older schools have doors that are not accessible due to steps leading up to those doors. That may not be in the primary, but some of your secondary entrances. Fifty percent of the elementary schools have playgrounds that aren't accessible due to the edging that blocks them or the accessible route to those locations being blocked in some manner. Pavement, one of the things we noticed in pavement is there's a, a lack of ceiling of those pavements. So in those joints, either adjacent to the building or out in the sea of paving, it allows water to get down underneath that paving and that just starts to work against it by freeze and thaw and expansion, contraction and starts to damage the paving. Soil movement's a problem in, in every campus and across, across North Texas. And that's something that's creating tripping hazards, poor drainage on sites, some non-compliance of accessible routes along some sidewalks that have moved, pavement failures, things of that nature. Thirty-five percent of the schools have non-compliant accessible parking spaces due to slope that's been exceeded. A lot of times that has to do with soil movement. Again, limited parking on the older campuses. Many, most of the campuses, many of the older campuses are slab-on-grade. And that was kinda the case up until about nineteen ninety-five is in general terms before you got slabs that were separated from the soil. And so there's a potential for a lot of movement in those buildings up to about that point. Creating uneven floors inside. We've, there were some cases where the floors had fallen away four to six inches in places in bathrooms and things like that. So a lot of, a lot of those, those are generally addressed fairly quickly by the maintenance staff. But those, those stories, there are a lot of those stories where those things have happened. Moisture barriers underneath your slab is, is an issue. They're just not there anymore, they're not functioning anymore. The problem is, is that in recent years, you can't use the, as strong of adhesives and so they don't hold anymore. And so it's a challenge to get, to get products. The district has identified some products that do, do stick your floors, but that, that's a challenge and will be as we go through any kinda renovations. Differential movement, a lot of times we saw was, was affected by some large trees that were located near the buildings. And the older phases of construction, eighty-five percent of those are slab-on-graves. We talked a little bit about that. Half have, have experienced recent issues with differential movement. Water migrating through the slab, things of that nature affecting, affecting the, the floors or maybe even affecting the casework in some cases where it migrates up and, and is, is soaked up by the wood and the casework. Five campuses have crawl space foundations that there's some rust that we saw in the, in the framing underneath the building. Basically because they're, they're poorly ventilated. There was a time where those spaces would have been disventilated by natural flow of air and we tried now to do a forced ventilation in there. Aside from the older campuses where you, where we have those foundation issues, I, I think you're structurally beyond that, beyond the foundation issues, your buildings are very, very serviceable from a structural standpoint. We talked a little bit about asbestos and that we know they're, they're, they are in the district and will need to be something we consider with any kinda work that we go forward with. You all know, I believe, about the single-pane windows and the issues with the asbestos glazing putty in there and how much of a challenge that is for, for replacement of, of simple panes of glass. And then your control joints and expansion joints have often failed and not been maintained in, in many buildings. That's, that's a vertical joint that kinda is there to keep water out of the building. Eighty percent of the classrooms don't have a, an easy lockdown capacity. Requires a key or something of that nature. Most of the campuses built prior to nineteen ninety are filled with door hardware that's not ADA compliant. The casework, one thing that surprised us, we saw a, a number of, a, a good number of locations where the, the casework, even in new, some of the newer facilities has been damaged or is not holding up very well. It's Boeing, it's delaminating, it's warping and probably is gonna need to be replaced. Older campuses have a miss, have a mismatched mix of finishes, that's hard to say, that leave the building appearing disjointed and inconsistent in its aesthetic. Doesn't really, you know, impact maybe kids' learning, but it's not a very pleasant-looking building in some cases. Well-worn finishes, in some cases it actually are failing and are beyond their, their serviceable life. With the exception of the two pre-Ks and Liberty Grove and Carver, all the campuses are in need of a secure vestibule at the front door to kinda control who comes in the building and, and where they go once they're in. Just some general needs of, of global safety standpoint. Access control was something we looked at and there has, it's just, it's a challenge to maintain, to monitor those doors, those exterior doors with all the activities that are going on. And many of the high schools in particular require the doors to open so the students can circulate just because there's not enough, the hallways are too narrow that they have to use the exterior, particularly at Garland High School. They have to go outside in order to circulate through the building. Perimeter fencing, fencing on many campuses was limited or nonexistent. And in our opinion, a property design fence can help to be a deterrent to some kind of action that you don't want to occur at your schools. It provides a demarcation from public and private space, deterring trespassing and also gives you an opportunity to detect somebody trying to do something nefarious on your campuses. Exterior surveillance is often curtailed by budget limitations. And there are a number of improvements that need to occur on that across the district for pickup, drop-off zones, recessed areas and even in the inside of the building. The cameras are there, but they're, they're, the coverage is not sufficient for the type of cameras that are available, that are, that are used. Telecommunication rooms are not always heated and cooled, I'm sorry, cooled the way you would like it so that they're safeguard and extend the lifespan of that, that equipment. Intercom coverage at the exterior of schools is found to be limited around the pickup and the drop-off areas and the playgrounds. This is so that kids can be, so that folks who are outside will be warned, the same as those who are inside if there's a lockdown situation, something of that nature. Exterior lighting at many buildings in the parking lot were poor, nonexistent. We had heard several stories of staff where they're scared at night to go out and go to their car without their husbands coming to walk them out to their car. So we had a number of locations, we heard those type of stories. T E A standards, one of the primary things we look at is do your classrooms and your spaces hold up against the Texas, the T E A standards? The older portions of your campuses do not. There, there are usually two smaller classrooms required. The other thing that we saw a lot of is that the cafeterias and libraries in your, a lot of your older facilities are undersized. That's due to the, they didn't have the T E A standards back then, that's number one. But further than that, those schools were often expanded and nothing was done with all of those spaces. Some were done, some were not, some were not addressed. One of the things that was apparent was a lack of standard, standardization considering your special, your special programs with, across the district. The number of special education spaces across the district were housed in spaces that did not really serve the needs of that population. In one location, there, there was an electrical or janitor's closet that was used as a changing room. Sometimes bookcases were used to divide it from the main court, divide that space from the main corridor. And they had limited privacy for those, for those kids when they needed to be changed. And then just a general lack of compliance with ADA in those spaces. And that was fairly common across the district wherever those, those spaces existed. Mechanical systems, even in your newest facilities are reaching or have exceeded their expected lifespan and will need to be, are now or soon need to be replaced. Talks a little bit here about chilled water and the lifespan of that being about twenty-five years. And you've got twenty-four facilities that are reaching those or have exceeded those, those guidelines that need to be addressed. You also have some replacement of some boilers that'll be needed for those, for those heating and cooling systems need to be replaced. Talk a little bit here about the specifics on some chilled water systems. Twenty-two of those facilities will need mechanical systems replaced there. Also, your rooftop units or your split systems is the case maybe. Those are typically at fifteen years and there's twenty-seven campuses whose entire mechanical system is beyond that, that lifespan, that serviceable lifespan. Doesn't mean they won't last beyond that, doesn't mean you can't maintain them past that. It's just a risk that if they're past that, they're, they're gonna need to have something addressed there. There are safety concerns of some of the electrical panels where they're just overfull of their old equipment. Those systems generally last twenty to thirty years. In, in general terms, you're pretty good across the district with your electrical systems. But there are twenty-nine facilities that have obsolete panels or transformers or switchgear that need to be replaced in the near future. Electrical rooms are also often being used against the code as storage rooms. Electrical lighting is pretty, pretty good, pretty well taken care of across the district. There are twenty-three campuses that we would recommend some, some work with regard to lighting. Plumbing systems, this is a big one for you. Plumbing systems at the older campuses are getting to an age where they, they have been or could be substantial failures due to the old lines and the material that those, those lines are made of. lines are made of. Most of your, most of your restrooms are mismatched material, don't meet toss Texas accessibility standard and need to be renovated in order to meet those standards. Going back to the, the plumbing lines, ninety percent of your sewer mains throughout the district are original to that campus, so even at your older campuses that you may have some of those that are seventy-seven years old in some cases. They've experienced a lot of blockage issues and we recommend that those be replaced. Those will not be an inexpensive thing to, to address in this, in this process. Talk a little bit about controls and lifespan on controls. You're in pretty good, pretty good shape there with regard to controls. Fire alarm systems last about twelve years. Thirty-two of your campuses' facilities will be surpassing that lifespan within the next five years. Twenty-two facilities are sprinkled, I'm sorry, have no form of sprinkler fire protection installed and on several campuses the only protection is in the newer additions. So fire sprinklers were not something that were required years ago and they're not there and so that's something we would recommend that you go back and, and retrofit into your buildings to bring them up with code. There's some, there's some campuses that need sprinkler heads replaced due to manufacturing recalls. The roofs, there's, there's generally some level of, of roofwork that's needed across most campuses on the district. And then in the kitchens with regard to food service equipment, approximately seventy percent of the campuses have food service equipment that's in good condition, however of those seventy percent, there are some that need, that have some equipment replacement and there's about thirty percent that need an extensive food service replace, food service equipment replacement. So one of the things we talked about was prototypes and we started to look at, at the different prototypes across the district and so we noticed that they've changed and varied over the years as one might expect. Those are due to the evolving teaching methodologies as we get into the open concept plans for instance, community growth, different architects that have worked facilities and different administrations that have led the district and there's probably some other reasons we didn't come up as well. Elementary schools, there's about ten prototypes, ten prototypes are used across the district and eight facilities are non-prototypical, they're kind of their own, they don't really fit into a, a model. In middle schools, there's about four prototypes and two facilities that don't really fit into a model. In high schools, there's three prototypes and one that really does not fit into a model. So I'm going to go through the prototypes just briefly. The pre-K is, there's only one pre-K that you have in Cisneros and Parsons. You have elementary school prototype ESA. This prototype is generally in place from the sixties, throughout the sixties. It is at Beaver, Centerville, Park Crest, Bullock, Cooper and South Gate. In this, in this, you'll also see that we listed the total campus size, the site size and here's where you'll see some of those generally small sites in the older schools. We also list the additions there, the age of the original building and the additions and then what was added during those additions for your reference. Also Hanley Weaver, Bradfield, Shorehaven and Montclair. This is that general prototype, the shaded area there was the prototype and then everything after that was all additions to that prototype. This prototype generally includes, in that nineteen sixty-two, there's about eleven, depending on the model, there's eleven to thirteen classrooms, they were fairly small campuses when originally built with an administrative area and a kitchen area and that kitchen, it's, it was kind of a kit of parts, that kitchen kind of moved different places throughout the, the life of that prototype to fit the site conditions. Prototype ESB is your, what we started to call our Starship Enterprise Schools, it's our round model and it was pretty consistent in its original construction. It was only used for a couple of years, it only occurred in the, in the early seventies for four schools. And then as it was added on to, it was added on to, one of them had, added an additional round, a circular building, another one added a round the circular building and other ones were more rectangular additions. You can see it there, just an example. But again, it was a fairly small school and originally built, it had, I, I think the count on that was thirteen classrooms in that one with an administration area and these earliest schools also did not include gyms, they didn't have any gymnasiums based in them. Those were added later as part of later additions. Your prototype ESC included Davis, Roach, Vile and Etheridge and also let me talk about B through E, those are all open concept plan schools and so you have situations where you, in order to get into the classroom that's against the outside wall, I have to walk through another classroom that's connected to the hallway. Often that wall, in some cases there's doors that have been installed since it was originally built, in other cases it's still open between those two classrooms where there's still space on each side where there's an opening, shared, shared space between those, between those classrooms. The teachers work with it, they, they deal with it, I don't know if it's an ideal situation, I guess it depends on how you want to deliver the curriculum, it doesn't seem ideal. The other thing that we see in a lot of this is they had movable walls that didn't go to deck and so you have some sound issues even with those, even without those openings, if they put doors, I'm getting a lot of sound transferring over the walls. And so that has occurred in a lot of these, these open concept plans where they've gone back and tried to close the classrooms. So there's kind of the model of this one, this one, when they got to this prototype, it was, there was an increased number, there's twenty-four classrooms in this original prototype, so they upped the size of the school by, by twice. And then you can see generally this school was added on to fairly consistently over the years throughout all the models of that one. The D model is Hickman, Northlake, Toller and Rowlett and this one is basically the square with the two rectangular, kind of coming, rectangles coming off of it. This school again has the pass-through classrooms, it has a library in the center which is sunken, it has some really convoluted pathways to the restrooms, it really makes monitoring that school very difficult on the teachers. It has a lobby that's very dark due to the concrete that's on the floor, the planter that's in the front and then the walls of that concrete finish coming around inside This is also the first campus where there were no additions made, so from this point forward in the elementary schools, those campuses are pretty much as, they are as they were originally built with the exception of some interior renovations, no added space to these. Your E prototype is Luna, Back and Sugar, it is also one of the open concept plans. This one has in the little triangle pieces there on, on, around the perimeter, those are all exterior doors for those exterior classrooms, for those paired exterior classrooms there, they had some doors to the outside, a little bit of a security issue there. Herford, Abbott and Sewell, built in the late eighties or early nineties, this is where they went away from the open concept plan, we don't see that, it lasted about eighteen years in the district. It's a fairly straightforward plan, it's got a central corridor that kind of runs the full length and off of that are your classroom wings. Your administration is near the front door, but it's not quite where it's, it's close enough that in this one, a secure vestibule is a fairly easy get on this project. Keely Lister, Keely and Lister are the G-type prototype, you can start to see the number of schools gets lesser with these later prototypes. It is the one that kind of has this flowing arc through the classroom wing. One of the challenges with that plan was that it was just difficult for a teacher to be able to stand out in the hallway and kind of monitor all the activity throughout that entire hallway because at some point that arc kind of catches your eyes, eye line, your sight line, you can't see around it. Stevens and Sedmond are the next prototype, prototype H. And this one has a center area which includes your library and some shared spaces, computer labs, I think the science labs were in there, there might have been an art room in that center area with, with three classroom pods off of that and then your administration, your dining and your gym off on the, on what would be your right side there. Your J prototype is Armstrong and Pearson, built in the early, probably part of this first bond, or close to it. It is a fairly typical plan, you have classrooms on both sides of your central area which has your administration, your library and your cafeteria and, and gym. Couch, Liberty Grove and Carver are your most recent one and this became, along with some, some lessons learned and some changes with Dougherty, or Dougherty, this became the model school that we looked at and started to grade all the, all the campuses against, so this was kind of the model we used. You can see by this time the sites are fairly, fairly large and this is a fairly new school. There were some issues with these schools, they were in generally pretty good shape and it's interesting of the, of these three schools, two of them had secure vestibules, the other one did not. And there's just kind of a layout of that, it's kind of a compact plan with some, some wings that get some natural light in the classrooms. The non-prototypical schools were Freeman, Williams, Caldwell, Watson, Kimberlin, Spring Creek, Dorsey and Dougherty and they were all kind of unique within the district although the earliest ones there, Williams and Freeman had shared some similarities as did Caldwell and Watson and Kimberlin, those, they, they shared some similarities, but we wouldn't call them prototypes. But you can see the numerous additions that were made to those, those again were fairly small campuses when originally built and have had numerous additions over the years. Watson has not, that may be just due to some site, site conditions, not been able to add on to it very easily. Your middle schools, like I said, there were three prototypes, I'm sorry, four prototypes at the middle school. The first one is Hudson and Austin Academy, those are very similar to your elementary school, middle prototype A, low buildings, un-air-conditioned with a, with a finger-type plan, so you got a lot of natural light, lots of, lots of glass in there, but they were just originally ventilated and, or ventilated and heated but not air-conditioned. You can kind of see the plan of that school there, you can see the multiple additions, this is one that received quite a few additions. Your middle school prototype B was your Jackson and O'Banion. One of the biggest challenges to this plan is the fact that as you go from your classroom wing, which on this plan is toward the bottom of the page, back toward the dining and the gymnasium and the fine arts, there's a split level on that first floor and you're dealing with some of those issues right now at Jackson, I know trying to address some, some of those concerns about the, the split level and access for, for, for a child in a wheelchair. Your prototype C was Sellers, Brandonburg, Coyle and Webb. It's a compact plan, it has a high number of classrooms in it, but it was also at one point a, a open school concept, an open concept school and so you still have, instead of walls in some cases, you have the old folding partitions that have just been kind of secured shut and those are serving as walls in some of these, in some locations, not all locations, but some locations. Prototype D is Lyle, Lyles and Hudson. And it's been, it's a, it's the only one of the middle school prototypes that's not been added on to yet with the exception of adding a gym, I'm sorry, weight room at that location. Again, it's a, it's a linear plan, you have a long corridor, you have your classrooms in the middle of the building and your administration at the center, your library near the center and then your, your athletics are off on one side and your fine arts and your dining are off on the other side. Bussy, your earliest middle school and your most recent, Shready are the two that don't have, that are not prototypes. Shready did become kind of the model though that we use to base, to kind of look at and assess all the other schools against. Your high school had three prototypes, the first one was South Garland, North Garland, fairly consistent, again they had a fairly small number of classrooms when it was originally built, it's been, both of them have been added on to quite a bit. It looks like the, this is the prototype for, this is South Garland, the difference between North Garland when it was originally built is it didn't have the auditorium, it appears from the information we had and were able to deduce there. Your B-type prototype is Lakeview and Nauman Smith, these have not changed, have not been added on to at all, they're pretty much as they, as they were, I'm sorry, Nauman Forest, doggone it. I live over on the other side of the, of Dallas and so I'm, I can't.
I know where you live.
I knew I was going to do that. So, but this, this plan in, in both locations has not really changed as far as additions to the main building, there's been some outbuildings that maybe have been built, but not the main building. One of the striking things about this building is really the lack of, of windows in this campus. They're arm, they're almost nonexistent. Rowlett and Saxie are your prototype C and those are your most recent ones and you can see the plans there. Has a high number, this has about a hundred, this, well this one has about a hundred classrooms compared to about thirty-five, I believe I counted, in the original portion of, of North and South Garland campuses, just to give you an idea of the evolution. And then no prototype was Garland High School, that one is certainly its own animal by any stretch of the imagination and I, and we have a number of additions listed there, I'm not sure it's all of them, but we think that's all of them that were done there. You know, and amazingly, you know, the, the challenge with Garland is just its site, there's just nowhere to go and, you know, how high up do you go? And I, you know, I, I think as these additions were made, nobody probably ever envisioned the number of additions that it would ultimately get to and so it's just kind of become kind of a really difficult building to modify and use and wayfind and everything else, so it's, it's a, it's a challenge. So I'm going to ask Doug to step up and talk a little bit, start to get into costs which you all really want to know about and let him get on with that.
Well, thank you Craig and President Click, Dr. Morrison and board members, it's a pleasure to be here tonight and talk about costs for, from the assessment. When we talk about costs, one of the first things that always comes to our mind is what's the bottom line and how much is this really going to cost and we'll get to that in just a moment, but first I wanted to go through the significance of the numbers we're going to show you and how we developed those numbers as well. This assessment is based on historical decisions that were made by people like yourself ten, twenty, thirty, even sixty years ago and so the numbers you see today are reflecting the variance that's between those decisions that were made by the, the values that they had in making those decisions and the values that you have with your standards that you're using today to make your decisions as well. And that's what we're going to show to you here in just a moment. So when we look at these costs though, it's not just one singular cost, it's going to be based on a composite of many numbers and those are built on multiple standards as well and I think that's important to remember as we're going through this presentation on this part. So let's now look at some statistics and facts and in particular we're going to look at Centerville Elementary as an example as we go through it, but this would apply to all the other schools as well. In this first table, what we're looking at is, it shows in chronological order the oldest buildings to the newest, starting with the oldest on top and the next column then shows the number of additions like Craig has been showing you for each of the facilities and then the next column after that is the square footage. And then finally in the last column, we have what we're calling the, the cost for renovations and repairs as a percent of the total replacement cost. Now, as you, as you look at this, you see some red lines on the, on the table there and the, 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 the data that we see here breaks up into about six distinct areas if you want to call it that. At the very bottom we have the buildings constructed in two thousand and they have the smallest renovation costs, those are in the twenties and thirties range and then after that if you move up one into the nineties, you're in the thirties and beginning the forties and then in the eighties you see that you're in the forties percentage and then in the seventies you're up into the fifties and then as, just as you go into the sixties, you see that you get a couple that are up in the, the low sixties as well. And then after that you see that you have a variety of different costs or percentages and those range in the forties, thirties and fifties as well. And I believe that you see a mixture in these earlier buildings because there were so many additions that were put on to those and so that, that moderates the overall cost of having to renovate those facilities because there's already some value that was put into those additions as well. The next thing I want to bring to your attention on this particular graph is that as you look at the size of the buildings, starting up at the top there with Freeman and you go all the way down to the bottom at Dougherty, you see that there's a slow progression in terms of the size of the buildings, that it continues to grow. In the early sixties and seventies, we see a, a range of thirty to forty thousand square feet, now those top ones are going to look a little larger because they have the additions on them, but as Craig just showed you in the prototypes, the original buildings were quite small. And as we continue into the seventies, those buildings grow to fifty-five to sixty-five thousand square feet and then in the eighties it jumps to sixty-five to seventy thousand and in two thousand it was up over.
Sir.
Yes, sir.
We cannot read it here, this, this chart you have, do you have a hard copy of it to hand out?
Uh.
Yeah. Can you make it bigger?
Doug, just do this, take Centerville and just start from the left to the right and explain what the top column means and walk them through, because you can kind of see the numbers here where it goes across, but at least to just explain what, just take that one and go from left to right, so when they get that information, they'll know what they're looking at when they, when it's much bigger.
Well, let's see if we can make it.
All right, I apologize for that, I'm sorry. Starting the first column there, that's just an ID number, we don't need to worry about that, same as the second column. Third column is an E, that just represents that it's an elementary school in the table because we're consolidating all this information from a bunch of different reports. The next column is the building facility number, which is, I believe in this one, one oh six, I believe, sorry about that. And then the next one is the facility name, Centerville and then after that you have nineteen sixty-one is the year that it was constructed. It had two additions is what's in the next column and then the area or the square footage of the building is thirty-six thousand four hundred and thirteen square feet and that includes those additions, that is your smallest facility that you have. And then the next is a. And then the next is a category, which is important for the rest of this presentation, is what we're calling the renovation improvements. And that is what we're talking about, that all the people out in the field went out and saw the technical things in terms of what needed to be improved on the building. This is your base number in terms of improvements to the building. And that last number there is fifty-one percent. That fifty-one percent represents the cost of the repairs and renovations relative to the, um, cost of the full replacement cost of the building. So this, uh, first one here at Centerville would cost fifty-one percent of replacing that exact building to bring the repairs and renovations for that building up to this, uh, current state. I think the, the other things I mentioned, you don't necessarily have to be able to see the graph, but there is a very strong correlation between the age of the building and the renovation costs that you see here. And again, the ones in the nineteen sixties and seventies, the reason that they are a mix is because they had additions already included with them, and there was already value in there, so you're not having to renovate those portions of the additions. Everybody okay on that first slide? Yes?
Yes.
What other headings or what other subcategories are there under type that we would see on potential other pages, other than renovation improvements?
Uh, I'm gonna go to the next slide, and I'll show you that.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, this slide. Three columns there that are important for you to be able to see. Those are the three white columns. Is sorted based, in this case, on the percentage of, uh, the renovation cost. So at the top, you have, uh, at the very top is Daughtry. And that first column that's in white and right in the middle, it says two percent. So that's saying that there's almost no renovation cost that's required on Daughtry Elementary. If you go down to the very bottom, the very last one is Walnut Glen, and it's at sixty-four percent, at the very bottom of that middle column in white. So we have a range of two percent to sixty-four percent. And so that's, that's the first category we're talking about is renovation costs. Those are the, um, percentages of what it would cost to renovate each of these facilities. The reason I had this slide was to show you in terms of percentages or how many schools there are. Uh, I'll just read them off to you. There are eight schools-
Let me interrupt you again. Do you not have any hard copy of this with you?
No, I don't.
Not, not any of the books you brought? Because we could make copies. We have-
This is extracted from all the data that's in those books, so these are unique pages.
Yeah. How long might that take to get that information so we could read it? All right, why don't, we're gonna take a break.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll take a break for five minutes, okay? Thank you. Uh, we will resume the presentation. Uh, looks like we've fixed the problems. Thank you for that.
Okay. I'm gonna go back to the first slide and go through that just briefly again. This first slide here, we're showing the age of the buildings, starting at the oldest building in nineteen forty-nine with Freeman, which you see on the top. And as we as we scroll down, you see that as we, uh, let me get all to the bottom now. At the very bottom on the far right side, Daughtry is at two percent. That means that the replacement cost for Daughtry is only two percent of what it would be on the new construction. And as you go up the page, you see that in two thousand six, two thousand two, Armstrong, Pearson, and all those, those are all in the twenties. And then as you go to the nineties, you're in the thirty percent range. I'm looking in the far right column there. And then, and as you go to the nineteen eighties, you're in the forties. And then as we go further, in the nineteen seventies, we're in the fifty percent range. And as we hit the, just into the sixties, you've got two that are in the sixty percent range. And then you see after that, you've got a bunch of them that are all over the place. And I believe as you look at the very center there, there's multiple additions, as many as four, threes, a lot of, uh, twos as well. And then, as I said before, because of those additions, you have inherent, uh, value in those additions, so that's why those renovation numbers are not as high as you see in the nineteen seventies. When we look down at the nineteen seventies, you see that they have, uh, many of them have zero additions, so that's why their numbers are higher than they are than the older ones. The second thing I was trying to show to you in this slide was that as you, uh, go to the very first one here with Freeman in nineteen forty-nine, even though it says fifty-three thousand square feet, as we, uh, mentioned before, that includes a bunch of additions. The actual original building was much smaller than the fifty-three thousand square feet. And in fact, what we saw was that uh, most of those buildings back then were, uh, in the thirty to forty thousand square foot range. And so as you go through time, you'll see that, um, the schools tend to get larger. And they're up into the seventies when you're in the nineteen eighties. And then they're in the eighties in two thousand range. And then currently, you've now reached in with, uh, Daughtry, you're in ninety-five thousand square feet. What's that? This next slide, you, um, shows the relationship of the schools and percentages. And when you asked about the types, that was a good question. We have three types of improvements that we're talking about here, and that's important because when I said in the beginning was that this is not just a singular number that you're looking at when we get to the final numbers here. It's a composite of all these numbers together, and you're, you have the flexibility to decide how you want to maneuver, and based on the standards, what you want to do going forward. So in the very center there, you have the same numbers that we just looked at on the previous slide for the elementaries, and this time it's, we have, uh, Daughtry's on the top at two percent. And as you go down that center column, they keep increasing. All the way down to, I believe, Walnut, or, okay, so there's Centerville. We'll come back to that in a second. There's Walnut Glen at sixty-four percent. So the second column, let's just start now looking at Centerville as an example. Nineteen sixty-one, two additions, thirty-six thousand square feet. So the renovation cost, as we've already discussed, is at fifty-one percent. Now, when we looked, we went and interviewed with your staff, and we looked at the TEA requirements, and we looked at, uh, any of the educational requirements. And when you add in those costs, that number jumps up to a hundred and twenty-four percent. And then the final one is imagine if you were to bring that school up to the full compliance of the capacity of Daughtry or your model, meaning Daughtry is a eight-hundred-plus student facility. And Centerville, I think, has, uh, approximately three hundred and forty-four students. So what you're saying is you would have to add a bunch of classrooms to bring it up to the Daughtry level. And you may not choose to do that, but we're just showing you what the, if you were to bring everything up to the maximum standard, your, your building standard, that last column reflects what the cost would be to, uh, bring that school up to your current elementary standard.
Could you go over the second column again, what that ma- represents?
Yes, sir. Uh, as Craig was mentioning before, there are many different standards that you've had over the history of these buildings. So there have been improvements that have made, but your libraries, for example, uh, don't currently meet the TEA standards. Your cafeterias, for example, don't meet your standards. There are multiple things that, because of the ages of the buildings and how many things have been added to them, uh, require, um, that they be upgraded to meet those TEA standards and your G I S D standard as well.
Are the TEA standards required or preferred?
There, is my understanding, we're saying that they're required, but I've never heard of anybody being inspected and shut down or anything like that. Um, if there's any issue, it's usually on a new facility where an architect designed something and it doesn't meet TEA standards. That is, that can be an issue. But on, uh, existing facilities, I'm not aware of any such issues like that. So in actuality, it's, it's gonna act as if it's a preferred. So if you didn't do anything to enlarge cafeteria or a library, that's not a consequence other than it doesn't meet a standard of what you're trying to deliver for your curriculum. Okay, so, uh, let me go to the next slide.
Excuse me, may I ask a question?
Yes.
And, and just as a reminder, for our elementary schools, we're using Daughtry as the standard?
It's a combination of Daughtry and Liberty Grove. It's a modified, uh, hybrid of those as well. So it's a hypothetical. It's not the actual building itself.
Okay.
And that's based on comments from staff of add this, subtract this. So, for example, we added in the art room designation and the science rooms as well, which were not necessarily, uh, existing in the, uh, Liberty Grove, but they were in Daughtry.
But not necessarily the two-story design?
Correct. No. That would be more based on what Craig was talking about. The sites are very tight, so you might need to go two stories if, uh, you were-
And with your hybrid model, is there a particular student enrollment size that you-
It's a, I believe, around eight-hundred-and-ten.
So that would be a Daughtry-sized-
Yes.
-school?
Yes.
But is that school not larger by far than our other elementary schools?
Yes.
Our average enrollment would be about five hundred?
The square footage at, uh, Daughtry's ninety-five thousand, Liberty Grove is smaller. And that's why you'll see a, a variance between those two schools, even though Liberty Grove is very new. Uh, the variance is based on the size and populations are different between those two schools.
Okay.
Okay, this slide here, um, just wanted to show you the numbers that we just looked at on the previous page, this is for Centerville, that were highlighted in yellow. Let me enlarge that. Sorry. Oh, they have copies? Okay. Thank you. Page three. What we're showing you here is how we came up with these numbers. And at the very top there, it says, uh, renovation totals, and in the far right, it says Centerville. And it says fifty-one percent. That was the number that we'd looked at at the very beginning. And it's saying three-point-five million dollars is what the, that fifty-one percent represents three-point-five million. And where that three-point-five million comes from is on the bottom of the sheet here, where we've gone and taken the twenty-eight categories, where we went out into the field and did our, um, assessment. And based on those categories, we applied those and rolled them up. And the totals for all those, uh, this is only a partial list here. It's not a, a full list. But it shows you how we added up all the numbers to get to the three-point-five million. And then that number rolled up to the top there to show you that for renovation totals, um, it's three-point-five million. This next slide, next page. As we showed you on Jackson, uh, one of the things we looked at for calculating the TEA requirements is, uh, comparing it against the model. So in the far, um, in the middle section there, you have what the model requirements are, or what the hypothetical model is for an elementary school. And then on the right, you have what Centerville is. And then in that far right column, you see the variance between the two schools. And based on that variance is what we've, uh, used to calculate the deficiency, if you will, in terms of space, uh, requirements. And the green represents, I've broken that down so that, uh, we could see that it, just by adding classes, if you see there, the items that are in green show that if you were to try to bring that school all the way up by adding classes, let's just break that out as a separate item so that it's not overburdening the, uh, the values of what we saw in the remodel cost. So that if you have a decision to make, you may just say, well, Centerville, we don't want to bring you up to Daughtry's level in terms of capacity. So all these green numbers have been subtracted out so they don't impact your numbers. And that's why we had three columns in the beginning there. One was for renovation costs, one was for TEA, and then the green represents what we'll see here in a second for adding to the total capacity. So this next page shows how we got that second one, the TEA, uh, numbers. Uh, we took everything off the previous sheet. All those yellow highlighted numbers were added up, and they were put into the spreadsheet, and values were added to them. And you can see here that the total for those TEA upgrades is three-point-six million, and that's on the far right there, um, about halfway up. I'm sorry, I don't think you have that page in front of you.
Yes, we do.
You do? Okay.
Yes, we do.
All right. And then the final sheet of this, uh, it says sort by full cost. This is what I'm calling bringing your schools up to the full capacity of your model. So Centerville would be going from the three-hundred-and-fifty students up to the eight-hundred-and-eighty, and everything on this sheet is showing you the cost for doing that. Again, ultimately, what you're gonna see here is, uh, several numbers. And you, as a district, may decide, well, we don't need to bring every school up to the same standard in terms of capacities. So what I'm trying to say is, again, it's not one singular number. There's a lot of flexibility in what we're presenting to you tonight as to what you can do. Terms of the, uh, just-
Could you go back?
Yes, sir.
Just start with the six-million number, six-nine in the right-hand column, and just go down if you could. Explain each of those numbers, please. It's under, uh, six-nine under renovation, far-right-hand column.
Oh, okay. I don't know, which, which sheet are you on?
That one.
That one? Okay. The six-nine is the full replacement cost for Centerville. So if we took the building as it is and just replaced it, put a new building down exactly that same size, or we renovated it a hundred percent, however you want to say it, it would be six-point-nine million dollars. So that's what that first number shows. If you were to compare for-
Let's stop. Is that building a new campus? Is that what you're saying? No.
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 So- Well, but how do you rent?
It's a hypothetical number- that says that if I were to take that building and its square footage, go over to the, in the middle there, it says district standard, eighteen million, three-hundred-and-thirty-seven, and two-eighty. That's the cost to build your hypothetical new model. Daughtry was similar to that.
Okay.
Okay? Daughtry's at ninety-five thousand square feet. Centerville's at thirty-six thousand square feet. So this represents, the six-point-nine million represents the prorated portion of the cost of the district standard. So that's why it's at about seven million, 'cause its square footage is much smaller than what Daughtry's is. Does that make sense?
So it is theoretically then building a new campus?
Yes.
Not renovation?
Yes.
Yes.
But the contents that go into it aren't gonna be equal to what's in Daughtry.
Of cour- no, it's being a percentage.
Correct.
Yeah, the point-three-eight percentage. Okay.
All right. The number underneath it is, represents, based on our field observations, there is three-point-five million dollars, or three-point-five-four-nine-six-seven-nine dollars of renovation costs. And that was what Craig was going through in terms of mechanical upgrades, fire sprinklers, ceiling replacements, and things like that. The, uh, the TEA standards is the five million dollars, five-zero-one-eight-seven-one-four. That's for increasing the size of the library, increasing the size of your cafeteria, increasing the size of the kitchen, increasing the size of your administration area, all to meet your TEA requirements and your G I S D standards as well.
When you, you talked in the presentation so far about the size of some of the campuses being very small, the footprint being very small.
Yes, sir.
Are you saying that with the total, that if we wanted to add the TEA standards to, for example, let's just take Centerville, is there room on that footprint to add these standards, uh, at that cost?
I think that's gonna be something you'll still have to look at. I'll say, in most cases, this fur- or this particular area where we're talking about TEA standards, the answer's gonna be yes. 'Cause you're talking about a percentage growth, like expanding a cafeteria, being able to push that wall out fifteen feet. You might be able to do that. To expand, let's say on Jackson, to put a new administration at the front of the building, I know there's space on that one to do that. So where we're just expanding things, yes, you can do it. It's the next one down that's more problematic that you probably can't do. And that is the subtotals of add G I S D standards where it says three-point-six-oh-six-nine-nine-eight. That's for the variance to try to bring the school up to match the capacity of your district standard. So you're gonna go from three-hundred-and-fifty students up to eight-hundred students. And that, I know you don't have room to do that. But again, what we were ta- tasked with was to show you what it costs to upgrade your buildings to a certain standard. That doesn't mean that you have to do that. And the reason we're showing it in this particular way is because we know that there's a challenge here in terms of what you've gotten, being able to do something going forward. We want to- something going forward. We want to give you the flexibility to make decisions on a per-campus basis. You may decide at one campus that, right now, the kitchen is working fine, and you don't need to upgrade it to the standard of what's in your district standard. You may also, though, decide that the cafeteria, though, doesn't meet your requirements for getting one place within the building that you can have all the students come together, and the cafeteria needs to be expanded, but the kitchen doesn't. The data there will allow you to make those decisions on a per-campus basis, rather than trying to just doing it wholesale across every campus. And that's why we've given you these three columns, and we can drill down even further on each of these campuses when we get together. This is just the assessment part. The next step is even more fun in terms of evaluating what you want to do. And, you know, we'll work with you to tie, to figure out how you want to drill down in each one of those.
So let's just go back for a second to the twelve-million-one-seventy-five number. That's taking a campus like Centerville and making it into our model campus?
That is correct. If you take the twelve-million-one-seventy-five and add it to the six-nine-one-eight on the top there, I have that number just a second. It comes out to nineteen million, about ninety-three thousand. And if you look at the number in the center again, at the district standard, eighteen million, three-hundred-and-thirty-seven, two-eighty, so what we're saying is, if you want to renovate that whole building, it's going to cost you about nineteen million. If you want to put a brand-new building of the same size of eight-hundred-and-eighty stu-, or eight-hundred-and-some students, it costs you eighteen million. So there's an apples-to-apples there in terms, you could either renovate the whole thing, or you could build a new building. But you may decide that you don't want to renovate the whole thing up to that standard. And that's an equity issue of whether you want all your, your buildings in your district to be the same size with the same delivery of all your programs. That's not something we can help you with there.
Okay, so Doug, if I'm, if I'm reading this, and you tell me if I'm right or wrong, on the renovation, the six-point-nine-one-eight, okay, that amount of money would, what it would be if I replaced that school with, as the same size that it currently is?
That's correct.
The number below that, the three-point-five, would be is if I keep the existing building and I just renovate that existing building?
That's correct.
So, if we're looking at this, board members, it's three-point-five if we go in and we, and remodel up to, you know, that's current size, remodeling it. If I wanted to tear it down and start over, like we did with Daughtry, but not build an eight-hundred-student school and build one that's the same sizes that we currently have, it would be six-point-nine million. Am I reading that correctly?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Within that six-nine, you still wouldn't have certain amenities on cafeteria size? It's still going to be, they're going to be too small?
I understand that. And then that's why, that's why if you went to TEA standards, if the true cost of that building is eight-point-five million, because then the cafeteria would be the right size, the library would be the right size, the classrooms would be the right size. Assuming I'm not building any bigger than the current building.
The reason this is skewed, when we're talking about this, is that when you do renovations, that first line, the five million, it costs more than to just do something new. So if you demoed that building and started over with a six-point-eight, then you would actually add the three-point-six million to get your educational standard.
So it'd be eleven million?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? Okay. All right. So this is the grand total here. In the far, the second column where it says renovation improvements, this is what we were just discussing. If you took all of those buildings and you were to just repair and improve them based on what we saw in the site, you're talking about a billion dollars, and that includes all of your other facilities as well. And then in the middle column, the TEA standards, you're talking about another three-hundred million, and that's just to bring them up for your cafeterias, your libraries, and administration areas as well. And then the last one, the hundred-and-fifty-three million, that shows you what it takes to bring it up to the full standard that you had adopted. And then the total is approximately one-point-five billion. And again, the reason we've shown it in multiple columns, instead of just giving you one, because we know that there's going to be a lot of discussion of how do we pare this thing down to make it manageable to even do anything here. And the thing that I would like you to take away from this, and I'll, I got a few more slides here, is that understanding from a strategic master plan, which I know you're going through, is very important as to how you want to treat each facility. They don't stand alone. So if you took something like Hillside and Watson, which are close to each other, one's got about three-hundred-and-some students, the other, I think, has five-hundred-and-some, you may want to renovate Hillside and put that money into that. And you may even want to increase the size of it up to maybe eight-hundred. I'm just giving you a hypothetical. But then you look at Watson, it's only a few blocks away. How you treat that building, do you want to invest a lot of money into upgrading that building at all? Or do you want to just try to keep it at the same service level that it is currently? But the point of this exercise was partly to show you that the delivery of services that you're providing in these schools is really directly proportional to the, I didn't mention this earlier, to the size of the building. When you have a ninety-five thousand-square-foot building, and I could show you on one of the previous slides, but you're providing a lot more than just classrooms in that ninety-five thousand square feet. You're providing now full art rooms, science classrooms, full computer labs. There, there are a couple other things, too, that I don't remember right off the top of my head. Those you will not see in a Centerville or in a Watson. So there's not an equity in terms of what you're delivering, in terms of your services to your student. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't, in your school of choice concept, have schools that you're delivering something unique at each of those buildings. But then I think you would want to have standards for, let's say, a small type of elementary school, or a medium-size, or a large. That's up to you to decide what you want your standards to be. We've given you an upper threshold here, in terms of if you build them all out to the maximum size, what it would cost. But there's certainly other standards that you could employ that are less than that as well. And then there's just a couple more slides here. These are just some other items, as we were discussing with staff, as we went through these, that they mentioned that these are important as part, at least be considered going forward. A CTE, CTE center. Right now, things are spread across the district in multiple locations. An auditorium, athletics for each of the high schools. Storm shelters is a code requirement that's coming up. We just put a zero in there because we don't know which way you want to go in terms of your upgrading your facilities. As Craig mentioned, almost all your facilities need secured vestibules as well. These last three are numbers that were provided by staff. Security at nineteen million. Technology update is sixty-two million. That's a cycle cost, meaning that, that's just to get you current, if you will. And the next one, new technology, is just a placeholder. I don't really even have a good number. That was just one that was given out as representing something that you might be doing going forward.
And none of these numbers are in the previous chart?
That is correct.
And is there any, you have a number here for security of just under, just over nineteen million dollars. Is there any security measures in any of the billion-plus in the, in the previous chart?
Now, yes. You already have a program that's in place. It's a good program. This is to augment that program to the standards that they have set for all the buildings. And they were already going towards that. This is just pushing it forward for the next five years as well.
I'm not sure I get, I understand your answer.
For example, you may have five cameras right now on the exterior of the building. But over time, they've understood that five cameras does not provide the security surveillance that they deem to be appropriate for a campus. So for the elementaries, what would they do on elementaries? Fifteen cameras or something like that?
If you wanted to get it up to a standard of every elementary will have twenty to twenty-five cameras inside and out, we've got to bring that up. And then we also have to look at the placement of existing surveillance systems which have become outdated or, or.
So the five cameras are included. Everything that the gentleman just referred to is in the security number on this page?
That's correct.
So there's, in reality, no greater security in the first billion-dollar number than we have now? Is, is that what you're saying? I'm just trying to, I'm just getting.
As you go through each of these projects, we've identified the security needs. If we go through and do renovation, let's use secured vestibules as an example, that was a pulled-out, because you guys may want to pull that out and do it. So we haven't identified that, but we could as a number. If we go through and renovate, that's going to happen as part of the renovation cost.
But it's not in there?
No, no, it is. If we go through and renovate, we're going to do secured vestibules. What we've identified in the assessment would be part of the work that gets done. So that's, the reason we identified that separately is that may be a project that your staff said, we may just want to do that. So we've just put a zero cost. If it gets done as part of renovation, it's going to be done.
So in the billion-dollar number?
Those things.
It does include?
Those things are covered.
Okay.
Those things are covered.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. So it has much greater security for the ones that have gone through his stepped process. It relates back to the study, and as you read each of your campuses, we've identified, here's your security threats, there's a hundred-and-fifty thousand task items. So each campus has task items related to what needs to be done, and that ties to cost. And it is a fairly stepped process that gets you to these numbers. All we did here is pulled out things that your staff had identified as kind of over and above.
Over and above, okay.
And there's a detailed list of that nineteen million that your staff has given to us. Same with technology as well.
Mr. Gleck, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Can you go back one slide, please, to number one-hundred?
Yes.
Would it be accurate to say that with the GIST full standards, since the model you used was at a base level of enrollment for the elementary schools of eight-hundred, which far exceeds the typical school size, that you would then be accommodating eighty times forty elementary schools, would be forty thousand students, which is far more than we presently have? And I'm not sure how that would align with Dr. Roden's projections, but it's also true that building out to these projec-, if we built everything out, we'd have far more capacity and access capacity to that which we are actually utilizing at this time or projected to need?
Good, good point. We wouldn't expect that you would build every single school out. There are two ways to look at it. If you build out fifty percent of them, you'd close maybe some of them, or not do all of them. I think you have some flexibility there in terms of how you do that. On Daughtry, you did raise that one up to eight-hundred. It wasn't that before, but it pulled in, in that region, additional, I think, four streets of houses and development there. So in certain situations, it probably is advantageous to go to the eight-hundred. But I'm not saying that that's what you'd do as a model for everything. So yes, you wouldn't go to forty thousand for the whole district. But it, it does show you that for a strategic plan, it's very important to understand, as I was saying before, about Hillside and Watson, what you do at one campus can affect what you do at the other one. So it's not just a singular point where you're evaluating it. And that's something that the assessment, we don't do that at this point. That's the next step. Okay? These are just additional fees. We wanted to make sure that you're aware of that are included in any bond planning process, some bond fees and contingencies. And we don't have anything for site acquisition at this point. We don't know what you'd want to be trying to do. And then off-site contingency is just for utilities and things that you don't anticipate, but you want to cover.
And your bond fees are based on the full amount?
That is correct.
Yes, yeah, okay.
So as you bring all these numbers down?
Yeah, we come all down, okay.
These would all come down as well.
Could you go back one slide again, please?
Yes, sir.
We've just had very brief conversations about the CTE center. How many square feet is that? Just give us some.
Oh, gosh. I think it was forty to sixty thousand square feet.
Okay.
I based it on another model we've used in another district, just as a central campus type of thing.
Okay.
It's, it's purely conceptual, just to give you a placeholder for what that. And these are all escalated, fully-loaded numbers as well. These are not just raw construction costs. So this includes escalations for three years to the midpoint of a five-year bond to make sure that you're covered, because there is escalation in terms of the construction industry. It has all your soft costs and everything else in it as well. So these are fully loaded.
Explain soft cost.
Soft cost includes things like permits, cost for vendors, including architectural fees. It includes material testing. There are a bunch of things that are not necessarily in the construction budget that you still have to pay for to cover the execution of that project. Any other questions? Oops. And then this is the full, instead, instead of saying this is the bottom line, I will say this is the upper threshold of what you're looking at, is the one-point-seven billion. So we would want to see how you could pare it down, bring it down to meet your goals.
I was thinking, as Doug was going to present these final numbers, what we didn't hand out was an AED to each of you guys, so you could shock yourself back to life. Here's what I hope you guys gather from tonight, and I do think this is very, very important. When you start planning, let me tell you why, what we've shown you, so, because it may be a little confusing, you go, boy, you could go this way, you can go this way, you can go this way. It's drawing a line that no matter where you go, when you start talking about a strategic vision for your district, and you start saying, what about this, what about this, where, no one's going to have to scurry off and say, well, let us think about that, so let us give you an idea. Regardless of the direction you want to go, we can show you impact like that. So you can make solid decisions. If you tell us tonight, we need secure vestibules at all our districts, we're not going to wag it. We're not going to just throw a number out there. We can tell you, this is what that costs. We've touched your buildings. We know what you need to do, and so we can do that. So I hope you understand that the complexity of this is also the beauty in it, is when you decide, and that's why I said, we're not finished, we're starting. The data's here. The data is solid. The data is here. But now the decision starts driving from you, from a citizens committee, to say, here strategically where we want to go. You have to make decisions, but when you want to make decisions, we can tell you the cost impact of those decisions, really at a fly, and you can rely upon those numbers. These, these are, as Doug said, upper-end thresholds, but we're trying to be very, very comprehensive in this. It, it really gives you every piece of your district in almost any scenario. And the goal was equity. The goal was equity. And that's why we went the route we went.
Okay, Mark.
Just, if, if you would, looking at an overall assessment, what would be the four-to-five considerations that, as a board, we would, in administration, we would want to consider that we cannot ignore? What are, what are the four or five non-negotiables? Are there four or five non-negotiables that have to be addressed in the next four to five years? There may be, it may be more than four or five, but I'm just saying. Yeah.
I think security is still one of the most important. And it's not just security in terms of surveillance, but it's the access controls, and including even, you have a lot of issues with your traffic and access to the sites. So it's the broad spectrum of security for access to the buildings and to the sites. And I think there's quite a bit in terms of what needs to be done for that area. Second one, I think I would go with mechanical systems. I believe that's an important thing that can't be neglected, because when your mechanical systems go down and your schools close, that's not good for you. Or if you have to move them to another location. So I think I would put that number two. A lot of the other things are more programmatic, in terms of, yes, that would be nice to have larger libraries, or larger cafeterias, or how people assemble. But there are probably some areas, certain facilities, that really could use some additional programmatic elements. And then I think the fourth one I would include would be your technology. Bringing that up to current levels would be very important.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Ms. Griffin?
I don't think my question, thank you all so much. I don't think I'll be reading it over the holidays, but, thank you. The question is to us. I want to understand, as a board, our next steps. I hear strategic plan, I hear citizen committees, but I'm really concerned about, is not the next step for us as a board to review all of this material and to start making some assumptions and direction based on what we would like to see? Or is it going to go somewhere else before we have an opportunity to see what we want as a board? And if that is the case, I see this taking a lot of time. And so what is the plan for us meeting specifically to go through and digest all this information that we've received?
Okay, so what I, what I am used to in pre-, previously, would be for some of us from the administration level to sit down with Doug and Craig and some different Huckabee associates, and we would.
would basically look at what we have defined as the top priorities. Secure vestibules, that number is, and I'm just throwing out a number, $20 million. Technology is $69 million. You get some fixed, some fixed cost. And so, and then mechanical, what boilers have to be replaced? You know, are there any roofs, are there any rooftops that are going to be, you know, in critical need within the next five years, assuming a bond is for a five-year period? So you define things in a five, 10, and 15-year period when it comes to those kinds of issues, and you start scaling it back. Now, that'll give you a certain number, whatever that amount is. Once you get that amount, then you can sit down and say, "Okay, we have, the board is deciding on going for a bond for X amount of dollars. Here's what we know, looking at the four or five key components," just what I, that's the reason I wanted Doug to tell everybody what those four or five things were. "Here's the four or five key elements that have to be addressed. How much is left?" And that's when you can have a public group, some different input on maybe selecting some different things, and to build towards a bond. But if, if the boilers or the coolers, you know, the cooling systems at 24-hour campuses are going to be breaking down and out of commission in the next five years, those have to be on the bond. So there's some things that have to be there. So we need to gather all of that stuff as quick as possible, bring it back to the board, because it's very possible, when we gather all of that, there may not be anything left.
May not be left. We haven't come up with a figure yet, and I guess that's, you know, I'm trying to figure out, you know, it sounds like what you say is that we look at what's a figure for a bond, and then we see what we can get in it. That's one way to look at it, but the other way-
I wasn't really talking about a figure. What I was talking about, in other words, if I sit there and I say, "To replace the mechanical systems, the roofs that have to be replaced, the security, the vestibules, the technology," and I put all of that out there, and I say, I'm just throwing out a number, this is all hypothetical, it's $285 million. When we come back to the board, if that's the highest number that the board wants to go with, then your conversation stops right there, because we're not going for a bond for more than $285 million. If the board turns around and says, "Now, in that discussion, we know what that's going to cost, but we feel like we can go out and ask the voters to approve maybe a bond upwards of," and whatever that number is, then you prioritize the things that are left and come up with the different things that you would like to add. Since we don't know adding all those things that are going to be on there, it's hard, it's hard to guess right now. I think what Mr. Huckabee mentioned was, the board in the next two to three weeks, if you have a chance to look through this, communicate with me if you feel like there's something that, you know what, this is a non-negotiable for me as a board member. I think this has to be on any kind of bond program. This is a non-negotiable. Let's say security and a secure vestibule is a non-negotiable. Well, if that's a non-negotiable by seven board members, then I direct Huckabee and them to say, "Okay, pull of the, we had four campuses that have them, pull the remaining campuses and tell me what the total cost to renovate that's going to be. That's a fixed cost." Now, if security is something that everybody agrees is a priority, and it looks like it's, say, it's 60, whatever that was, $62 million, then that's a fixed cost. We can add that to the total. We don't have to have an end number yet, but you are correct, Ms. Griffin, within the next two to three months, we would need to get to that end number pretty quickly.
I think what we'd also certainly have to do is ask Dr. Barajas to start working up some, some numbers where, at certain levels of bond amounts, this is what the tax increase potentially would be, because there is going to be that component. The other question I have for you is, so when we're looking through these reports, whatever the item is, let's say we go to a specific school, are there items that are highlighted, needs work, needs repair, needs replacement in the next X number of years? Is it broken down that way, so we can say, "Okay, for this school, we certainly need to do this, this, and this, this now"? Is that how it's done? And then, if it's done that way, let's say you code an item that must be done in the next two years with a, let's say it's a letter A. Is then, there somewhere for the whole district where you have all the As, and that cost for the As is this much? Have you done something like that, cross-matched by urgency?
No, we have not done that cross-matching, but we can do that. What you'll see in each school is the 28 categories that we did in the assessment, and there'll be examples one, within each of those categories. There'll be photographs that show specific things that we believe are highlights that you should see. So when you're reading through, you'll get some kind of a sense for each of those categories, what's being included. There then is, and I don't know where in the assessment report your detailed tasks are, they're at the back of the entire section of each of the reports, or there's a full section that shows every task within each school. So if you really want to drill down that far, you can see every one of them that says, "Replace the hardware on this door. Replace the door, hardware on this door. Paint this wall. Remove the ceiling tile here. Replace the chiller on this one." I mean, it's all listed there. And then the other locations are within the actual cost spreadsheets as well. You can see some of the itemization of items that, for example, the TEA stuff. You can also look at that chart as well to see what's being required.
We didn't necessarily set urgency, because that's really not our job, unfortunately. Our job is to identify it. You guys get to tell us the urgency. The staff, you get to set priority. That's not really what we-
But in the initial report that we got, it indicated that we have this number that has to be, should be replaced within five years. Is that indicated in the report?
Yes, it's indicated in the task or within the verbiage that's in the report.
Okay. Let me just go back-
It lists it as a separate item, but it's enlisted.
Okay. I want to make sure I'm correct on one thing. With this vestibules and the security issue, we just, of course, had another incident last week. Have you put in, I think you said yes, but then I'm not sure, the actual costs per school in that billion dollars of reconstructing or constructing a secure vestibule in that particular school?
If you do the renovation, so Doug had three numbers in there. If you do the renovation, then it's being addressed in the renovation, because it was a task item, so it gets addressed there. The reason he pulled out is a separate line, but it said zero, is there's a possibility that you're not going to do a billion dollars' worth of work, and we recognize that. And, but you might say, "Let's go do all these vestibules." So we've identified them. What we would need to do is peel them all out, put a cost to that, which would not be that difficult to do with all this data, and pull it out as a separate item, which would, over time, lower the billion-dollar cost, because it would already be accomplished. But that's why it's a separate line item. So the answer is yes. If you renovate, yes, it's addressed, but we recognize you may not renovate every building in the district. That would be tough, but you never had a client ever do something like that, so that would be hard.
And we've discussed various amounts, and informally, of course, and we've talked about where the tax rate might go, informally, again. You do this for many, many school districts. Is this a similar process, where the amount is close to shocking in the total, where we all know we can't go out for a billion and a half-dollar bond issue? We're not Dallas, or even, or that size district. So is this typical of what you see?
Yes, sir. And I probably should have started with that. Dallas goes out for a billion-dollar bond issue that needs five, really. So we have no expectation, and certainly you don't either, that you're going to take this number and go out and call a bond election. That's not the, that was not the purpose of the exercise. Purpose of the exercise is to give you absolute data on any decision you want to make going forward, that you've got solid data, and you know your decisions are based on correct data. And if you have a taxpayer who questions the wisdom, they can take the same data and go out and go through the same thing. The reason you're doing it is you're just not shooting from the hip. You're basing it on good, solid data. But, so to the answer to your question, yes, every client, you know, remember, we were looking at about a 10-year window in doing this. So the expectation wasn't, "You guys are going to call a bond election. We're going to go do all this and check that box off," and no district does that. What we do is we try to initially look for the things that you think are most critical, and let's do those first, but then let's set out a long-range vision. That's the strategic piece of this. So you know every decision you guys are making for the next 10 years. You're doing it based on a great plan. So this is the key step one of that plan.
And Ms. Griffin, to answer your previous question, this will be, on every single meeting we have, there will be an item discussing this. So that process starts our first meeting when we get back that first Tuesday.
Yeah, because there's still questions we're going to, I'm going to have when I review the data, and, you know, I just hope that we're going to have an opportunity. So you've answered that, thank you.
You know, one thing, and I know some people may still be with us at home or whatever, watching this, they'll have a chance, you know, if they can't sleep over the holidays. But let's look at security as an example. It's not just cameras. One of the things that Doug mentioned was, the 80% of our doors don't have the right locks on them, where the teachers can just push the button and it's secure. So if the decision by the board, or like the administration is to say, "Okay, security is absolutely a key," let's talk about just some different examples of security. You have the cameras inside and out. You have the secure vestibules. You have the locks on the doors. What else would be an example of something that would fall into the security?
And, sir, just give us your name, please.
Sure. My name's Al Lawrence, and-
Thank you, Al.
I had a title. You call me the Director of Technology and Security Design.
Correct. Good to see you.
Good to see you too, sir. You know, security encompasses a lot of things, and we talk about, there's the physical security. That is the surveillance cameras, the access control systems, our intrusion alarms that we have out there now. And there's, you know, we have a limited amount of surveillance out on our schools now, and we know it's insufficient. We know there's areas that we can't cover and everything, so, you know, we've addressed that. But there's also the physical security in our perimeter. If I'm going to invest a lot of money in establishing a good perimeter fence, because I want to funnel people around to the points of entry where I can see them, and if we have a four-foot-tall fence, it's useless to you. Anybody in the world's going to get over that. That's not a deterrent. If we have no fence, that's not a deterrent. But the purpose of access control isn't just on your doors. It's that outer perimeter, and then as we work in what we call our concentric circles of protection, if you will, the more I do out here, it takes a little less pressure off here, a little less pressure off here. So if I don't do fencing, let's say, well, we just can't afford to do the fencing, then we have to look at increasing that outer perimeter, those doors. But I also want to say this, physical security aside, a prepared staff is immeasurable, and there's a lot of things that we can do as a district that do not cost a lot of money. Okay? So there are little practices, those procedures, making sure that all of our teachers know to do exactly this in this type of an emergency, and to make sure that that is coordinated and practiced with our first responders. You know, we can do a lot of good there. There, no camera's going to stop somebody, that upset parent who's in the middle of a custody battle. They don't care if they're on surveillance, you know? But they do have a problem if they have a locked door, because now that's something that's delaying them. It's buying your staff time to be more prepared. So don't just, I don't want you to get too focused on security and think, "I got to have card readers. I've got to have cameras." There's a lot of things in those lists that break it down to say, you know, our teachers don't even cover their classroom doors the same way, or they don't have their emergency plans in the same location, so.
Is the material you just discussed, like perimeter fences, was that included in what we'll be looking at also?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you.
Because some campuses have it and some don't, and so again, we're trying to get you to parry on that.
Yes. Okay, sir.
I've worked on all the bond elections back all the way to '77, and we never had information like this, and I want to commend you. This is outstanding. I'm starting to wonder how we ever did it before, but I think it really does arm us to move forward and to start figuring out what we're going to do. But if, when it gets late enough, I get philosophical, so I look at Caldwell Elementary, which was constructed in 1955, and Mr. Axe attended that school, and so did I. And I'm thinking about the school board 60 years ago that had to sit down and decide what Caldwell Elementary was going to look like. And I don't think it probably took them too long, because you didn't have to worry about a lot of things, like gymnasiums and libraries and computer labs, or air conditioning. Yeah, a secured vestibule. We just left the doors open, I think, most, you know, 2047. And I think, looking back, it'd probably be pretty easy back then to sit down and figure out what a school's supposed to look like. And even 50 years ago, there's not that much change. If you look at our facilities 40 years ago. And I guess we're, and I don't know who has the answer. There's a lot of smart people in this room. I hope somebody does. I need somebody to make me feel good, that somewhere in this process, we're really going to address what a classroom should look like even 10 years from now. I mean, how are we supposed to know what to even build, I mean, even five years from now? Because we don't need another Caldwell that looks like Caldwell. We need, we need a whole new cat. So who can make me feel good?
Did you see him chill?
Thank you, thank you. I feel better already. Thank you, Cindy.
Could I, could I take a shot at that first? First, Mr. Nag, thank you for your comments. When we went to the large district seminar in Austin, there was a whole session in the second morning, put on by the leading architects from around the United States, on what the campus would look like, what the classrooms would look like. So we have an idea. I think you've attended those same sessions. You've put on presentations like that. So hopefully, that'll be part of our strategic plan as we look forward down in the future, what the campuses will look like. And that's, to me, besides all of this, what the great issues will be in education as it goes forward. We've read articles about that. Will the new school buildings be also part of the community centers? Will they be open 24/7? Will there be taking classes online? Will be the flipped classrooms, where you're doing like we've learned about, you do the lessons at home, you come back, and maybe you make an appointment with a teacher, to come in and work with the teacher? That's all been suggested in articles, some of them by the Tasby staff. And so I'm not sure if anybody really knows, but there's some progress being made.
I believe you are using a company right now for your strategic planning. They've already had three sessions, and they actually go into that kind of detail of what the classroom of the future should look like for you. And really, though, what it gets back to is that what we gave you tonight was an assessment based on your current history of your district. So what you would need to do is, with that strategic master plan, is marry it to your standards then, and so your prototypical standard for your building would change then. So if you have a classroom that maybe decreases in size, because you're going to use some different types of strategies of how to teach, that would be reflected then in your standards, and then that would ripple through then in terms of all your cost of what you're going to deliver going forward. You'd have to prioritize that as a specific task that you want to achieve, because there's so many competing things for, you know, a small amount of dollars.
Who else would like to comment, anybody? Mr. Lambert?
Just one quick comment, and I know that we're just starting this process, but and it was addressed in the, in the presentation to a certain extent, but I don't want to lose sight of it. I think these basic elements that we know that we're going to have to come back with, let's not lose touch with the fact that we have got to make sure that we have a baseline of equity programmatically throughout all of our campuses, so. And so it needs to be addressed, and then not forgetting the fact that we can't just look at what repairs we're going to have right now and not pay attention to what is the future in terms of certain facilities? Is it going to meet our demographic needs? And what is going to be the long-term replacement needs for it, so.
Okay, anybody else? Any other comments? We thank you very much, and I guess some of us, maybe all of us, look forward to reading the materials. And again, we'll have this on our first session as we come back on that second Tuesday of January for our first-
Well, and I didn't say this at the beginning, but we look forward to working with you through this. Part of our job is to work through the, kind of facilitate you through the what-if process to get to a conclusion, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Again, thank you all. I think let's go through the action items. Is that okay for everybody? Okay. We'll go to action item four A, consider approval, an increase of award for Apple equipment, software, and peripherals. Mr. Booker?
Yes, sir. To Mr. Glick, to the board members present, to Dr. Morrison, we have before you a proposed contract increase for our Apple contract of $4,093,373. contract increase for our Apple contract of $4,093,373. That is based on a number of mobile devices that are going to be added and deployed in the spring. I believe you have a memorandum that identifies by funding source, I think it's technology, which would be the 199 function, and special programs 211, the number of devices and the cost for each to deploy that in the spring. Administration is recommending an increase in the contract to procure those Apple items.
Dr. Morrison, I know you and I spoke about this, Mr. Hysaw and I spoke about this. Would you like to?
Yeah.
Give us some more information, please?
Sure. Board members, as you know, we traditionally bring forward the thought of, do we have the money for something before we actually do presentations on it? You will see a presentation in January on all the different things that if, if we approve this, I mean, if, if we move forward with securing these iPads for the, for the faculty, what they would be doing with them, how they would be engaging as far as presentations within their classroom. One of the things that Mr. Lambert just talked about is what's the new classroom going to look like? It no longer looks like teachers, you know, standing behind their desk or standing there, you know, lecturing and, and doing things. We have embedded videos, embedded all sorts of things within curriculum now that we can have access to, and these kinds of devices allow that. It also allows, as we move to a new student management system, for teachers to move around the room to call roll. It also allows them, when they're at home, if they have Wi-Fi or if they go to any other business, they, it makes them, where they can do a lot more of their work, more mobile, and makes it a whole lot easier for the, for the teachers to use. So we'll be bringing you a presentation on what we will be doing with all of these devices in January, but we wanted to go ahead and at least, you know, let you know that the money is there, and if the board so chooses, we will move forward with this.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, I have.
Ms. Griffin?
Yes. You've answered one of my questions about what the intent is, and I'm assuming from that explanation, there's a timing issue for why we need to do these before we get the explanation of how they're going to be used. Is, is that answer yes?
Well, I, I think, I think in reality, I just mentioned a lot of the ways that they're going to be used, but I think a presentation with an iPad that sits there and shows you using the current equipment and things like that, and we can actually demonstrate to the board the different things that teachers can do, and it's, and things that teachers are current, currently doing. We have teachers that are already doing this within the district, you know, because they've secured iPads through title, title programs and things like that. It just balances things out. The one thing that we're, you know, we have to start steering towards is, which is what Mr. Lambert talked about, is equity. And we have some campuses that are very technology strong. You know, some of our magnet schools have tremendous amount of technology, not just for teachers but for kids, and we have some needs in our other areas. And to, quite frankly, before we start equalizing for the students, we realize the teachers are a little bit more behind than the kids are when it comes to technology, and we want to give them a head start. We want to sit there and give them the opportunity, if we move forward with this, to do professional development for 12 to 18 months, best-case scenario, before we would start rolling anything out to students, because it's going to take a whole lot longer for the teachers to get up to speed than it will the students if we start moving student devices, not necessarily one-on-one, but even classroom sets where we engage. As, as we know, those of us that have young children, they have grown up with these devices, and they can do it in their sleep, and people my age struggle.
Well, I'm glad to see you're removing that limitation on the teachers, but, well, With these many devices, new devices, is there extra staffing in technology for the support? And is there increased maintenance for all of this, this new technology? I see, I see things here, but I don't see the extra staffing for these number of devices being added. The last time we did this, we added those devices, crippling technology. So bearing in this, am I seeing extra staffing for support or what?
Well, when we did this in the previous district, I turned it over to the technology. The Director of Technology organized his staff, trained their staff. A lot of the things, the imaging took place as they were purchased and done for us. Some of it was imaged as they were brought in, depending upon how the contract's written. Knowing what I know, having seen it done for 10,000 students, all within about a month and a half period, and all teachers at the high school receiving them as well, we did not add staff at that district, and our current staff was able to do that because they, it's, it's a matter of, once I teach somebody how to image that iPad, it's a matter of teaching them how to do it. If I have 20 people doing it, then all 20 people are, all 20 people are doing it. Now, the way we rolled this out in the previous district when it came to teachers, let's say I show up at Garland High School, and it's Garland High School's day for the teachers to get their iPads, then they, they sit, they, they sit there in rooms of 20, and they walk through a book that step-by-step walks them through on how to set up their iTunes account that's separate and apart from their personal account. All of those things are done. And having done this in the previous district, the very first conversation I would have with Mr. Hysaw is contact somebody I know that has done it, and they would be more than happy to share a step-by-step approach that I think all, our people are more, more than capable of doing. Now, when it comes to, as any device, when it comes to Apple, we have insurance policies on most of this stuff when you get these big-type things. If one of them just starts to glitch, I guess, you send it back and they fix it.
Okay. I know imaging is one thing, and that wasn't what I was talking about so much as I'm talking about the ongoing maintenance. And so you've now said that within this, we have a healthy insurance policy, that we don't have to worry about maintaining the devices, they're going to be sent back. Is that in the contract? Is that what I'm hearing?
Ms. Griffin, the, the quotes that we receive from Apple, and it is a standard technology process, practice, to put the three-year Apple Care program as part of the purchase price.
So the care product is on.
Correct. So for three years, if something goes wrong, you send it back, they send you, they either fix it or send you another one to replace it.
At this, Mr. Booker know what I'm talking about, that we, we, you remember.
Yes. The last implementation, that was the standard practice that we followed with all of our Apple purchases since we started purchasing the mobile devices, is including the three-year Apple Care as part of the procurement.
Yeah, that, that's a great question. And one other thing I would tell you is, having done this before, we also secured an outside insurance provider that, I believe, don't hold me to this, it seems like it was $39. If you wanted to buy the insurance policy, because let's say I, I lost it, I got, I left it out in the rain, I'm a teacher, or something happened, then when you, when you give that teacher the device, they're responsible for that device. Well, you can actually buy insurance policy for $39, so if something happens to that policy, it's replaced. I mean, if something happens to that iPad, it's replaced. So there, there's all sorts of options for people. We would not provide that for them if they, you know, that kind of thing, but we would give them the option as opposed to them, just like it's in anything. If we give them a computer now and they lose it, they have to replace it. That's part of the agreement currently with any laptop or something like that.
Mr. Axe?
Could you tell me how many of each device we're talking about, and does this include a device for, I'm not going to say every teacher, because there may be some teachers that this wouldn't be an appropriate device for, but for most of the teachers?
What teacher would that be?
I don't know.
We gave one to every teacher, every counselor, every administrator.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lambert?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Axe. That was one of my questions. But the other one is the special programs. Tell me more about what are these devices for special programs? What special programs are you referring to?
Special programs is the Title I funding, so those are the, the funding sources, what I was referring to. The Title I money that's utilized for, and I believe Mr. Cantu and someone from his office could give you more details as to what the mini-pads and others would be used for, but that are the, those are the Title I funds that's referred to in my memorandum when I said special programs.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm reading the memorandum, and, and there's, there is a, a row for iPads, and then there's a row for special programs. Are you saying that part of the iPads are in the special programs section because that's where the funding is coming from? I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
The, the special programs has approximately 2,491 of the mobile devices and 585 laptops.
Yeah, Mr. Booker, that's, that's what our question is, same question I had earlier today. Define, it's easy to say under the 3,000, 3,810, those are iPads. It says it. Which, can you tell us what the 2,491 mobile devices are? That's what we don't know.
There's a, those are going to be, the majority of those are the mini iPads, and a small percentage of those are the regular iPads, regular-sized iPads.
And now, Mr. Lambert, is it okay if I ask? Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. We have the teacher iPads, that's 3,810, it clearly says that. Who are the other mini and the iPads for? Are those replacements for existing devices? Maybe, Mr. Cantu, could you maybe help us?
Sure. Good evening. So part of that order is going to student classroom devices, and this is part of the Title I allocations that goes out to campuses. And part of that is, is what's going to be used to outfit some of those schools. Depending on what, what needs the campuses have, they can request student classroom devices.
Can I try to put this in English? 3,810 are the number of teacher devices for $2.2 million iPad. That's, that, that's new, something that we have not done. The other, another number up top is just a continuation of other things that we have done in the past, adding these devices at the campus, and they're saying it's coming from this funding source to get that, to get those. And that's been consistent with what we've done in the title programs over the last few years. So it's, it's one big money amount, two separate things going on here. One deals with teachers, one deals with kids. Is that fair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is the kids just MSTs?
No, ma'am.
No.
That goes to all Title I campuses that have.
All, this is Title I.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And so the teacher iPads, that's going to come out of our general fund, 199? Is that, is that, that's, yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Is that okay? Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Okay. There being no other question, the chair will entertain a motion on the increase in award for Apple equipment and software and peripherals.
I'll make a motion that we increase the award for Apple equipment, software, and peripherals as printed in our agenda.
Second. We have a motion second. Any discussion there being done? Please show your affirmation raising your hand. That item passes 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Booker. We'll go to item 4B, consider approval of a resolution for future construction delivery method for construction or construction-related projects. Mr. Hudson?
Yes, sir. Mr. Glick, trustees, and Dr. Morrison, previously, we've brought the same resolution to you for approval. It's our default delivery method, competitive seal proposal, may have been in the summer. Well, the legislature changed the government code that it's located in. When you previously approved it, it was in 2267. It is now in 2269. So we're bringing the resolution for your approval because the legislature changed the government code that this was located in. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Hudson? There being none, the chair will entertain a motion on the resolution for future construction delivery method.
Move the approval of the resolution for future construction delivery method as printed in our agenda.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any discussion there being none, chair will show your affirmation, raise your hand. That item passes 7-0. We are now pleased to go into closed executive session on this Code 551001 under the following sections, 551071, consultation with our attorney, 551074, approval of personnel matters, and 551074, superintendent evaluation instrument.
It's now 10:35 PM. We returned from closed executive session. I hereby certify that the only matters discussed were those permitted under Section 551001, 551071, and 551074. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I move the approval of the administrative's recommended appointment, specifically Joel Falcon Jr., his Executive Director of Facilities and Maintenance, and Nelson Orta, Technology Coordinator.
Any discussion? Show your affirmation raising your hand. That item passes 7-0. Is there a motion for adjournment? We're adjourned.